It is now six ten, September thirteenth, and we're gonna begin the public speak out portion of our meeting. We have one person who has signed up to speak, and that is Pastor Bocknight. Did I get it right, Pastor?
That's right.
All right, and so there, we're joined by Counselor Letterman, Counselor Davila, and unfortunately, there may have been a miscommunication, but we'll certainly convey your concerns and comments to the rest of the council. So the floor is yours.
All right, I have been calling the ordinance people, the police. I have a problem at forty-six Pendleton Avenue. They are selling drugs or something's going on over there. They, I have had, had made numerous calls there. When it, when the people first moved over there, it was a man and a lady. And I guess she had like different people that would come periodically and stay over there. But somewhere in there, they must have split up. And now she's got seemingly boarders over there who are disrupting. They're in there at one, two, three, four o'clock in the morning. And now, now, well, I would say since January, they have, she has like some guy that comes in a gray BMW, I got the license plate number somewhere, where he's blowing the horn at two and three o'clock in the morning, they're coming out. Now, my biggest problem is that the police, when I call them, the man with the BMW has a scanner. And I just realized that. So by the time the police get here, when they hear that the police are coming, and I watched him do it this night, it was around two thirty in the morning. I called the police because they were having like a makeshift party over there on outside, and it's very dark over there, so you can't see because it's too, too lot. So it's an empty lot than the house, and it's very dark. They were out there at two something in the morning with loud music. They, they, they have drinks, they had the, the guys, the girls inside of the guys legs and all kind of craziness. And so I called the police and maybe a minute or two, as soon as they got the message, they shut the, shut the trunk down, closed up everything and ran in the house, and everything was dark. And I watched the police come by and slow down. And when they didn't see anybody out there, they just kept going. And this is constant. This is every night, every night, they're doing these kind of things. You can't gauge it because sometimes during the day, they have traffic in and out of there all day. But then there are other days when it's quiet and you don't see that until over in the middle of the night. And so that is my chief complaint, is that I don't understand why nothing's being done. I, I, I called Mr. Hirsch, I talked to, Mr. Hirsch, I talked to him. I, I got the email from Ms., I can't say her name, Kappa somebody.
Uh, Kelly.
Okay.
From our administrative assistant.
I got the email for, from her. I emailed her back and forth telling her about what I was going through over here because it's a nuisance as well. There are people that are coming into the neighborhood that don't belong here. So you got, you got traffic going in and out, but it's especially at night. They're coming in and out, they're walking in and out over there. They've taken apart of, they look, it looks like the siding of the house off. So I, I watched it, there was one piece that was off, and then they took another piece off. And then it, it's like they're putting something in there and then putting the, not the whole thing, but pieces of it back on there. But there is some type of illegal activity going on over there, no doubt in my mind about it.
And so we appreciate you sharing, Pastor. One of the reasons why I wanted you to call in was so that you could alert other counselors. And, and one of the things that I think is important, certainly in the work that we're in, is that the more people that you have advocating for a particular issue, the more likely there is going to be a response. And so what I'll do to the rest of the council is, as is tomorrow morning, I will forward you the correspondence between Kelly and three one one as, as well as, I believe, someone from the ordinance squad. And I'll let you know what their follow-up responses were. It sounds to me that they have been, or at least based off of what they told me and what I read, was that they have been over there. But, but certainly it sounds to me like they, they certainly need to pay more attention to what is happening over there. So, you know, I appreciate you sharing, Pastor. I don't know if anyone, other counselors want to add anything. Since it's only us, you can feel free to do so. But if, if there is nothing that counselors want to add, I will make sure that they get the information from the, from three one one and that they have that correspondence. And then hopefully, we can have other counselors advocating on behalf of stopping what is going on at forty-six Pendleton Street, other than just myself.
Can I say something else?
Yeah, you certainly may. Let me, let me just defer to Counselor Letterman, and then I'll come right back to you, Pastor.
Mr. President, I would yield to let the pastor share her additional thought.
Sounds good. Pastor, floor is yours.
Okay, the other thing, because I, I have several, several concerns. And based upon what you just said, one of the things that I want to convey is that just because this might seem to be not the best of neighborhoods, everyone over here does not do drugs, everyone over here does, every, does not, not go to work. We, for the most part, this is a quiet neighborhood, this end that I'm on. We don't have, we haven't had these issues until of late. I've been here for somewhere between twelve and fourteen years. We own this house. And what I said to the police officers, I conveyed it to others, that it is not fair for, for me or anybody else over here to have to be concerned with this type of activity in the neighborhood as well as the noise. I cannot take it. If it's, and I, I know that there are ordinances about noise, but I don't understand why people are allowed to ride around with these big speakers in the back of their cars, playing music like they're the, the entertainment for this, for the neighborhood. I just don't understand. I don't understand that. I don't understand all these motorcycles that are riding constantly down the street. I have reported in the past, the dirt bikes. And it, because we had a problem with one thirty-six Orleans, they had dirt bikes over there. But evidently, they, that has been addressed, so they're not over there as much. But these are some of my big concerns, is that we should have, be able to have peace in our neighborhoods. I should not. If I want to hear music, I can play it in my own house. I don't need somebody riding down the street blasting their music. And then some of this stuff is vulgar, they're cussing and all kinds of stuff. And it's not because I'm a pastor, morally, it's, it's off. If that's the way you think and feel, keep that to yourself. But for us to have to be subjected to this, and I feel, I mean, I'm not saying, I'm not pointing a finger at anyone. I'm just stating what I feel. And that is that because of these type of neighborhoods, that people tend to feel that it's acceptable in our neighborhoods, and it is not. And I feel that if nobody speaks up, then it says that I am in agreeance with it. And I am not in agreeance with all of this noise. I'm not in agreeance with the, with the, with the music in the cars. I think something should be done about that. I'm not in agreeance with motorcycles doing wheelies. I was, I was coming down Union Street, getting ready to turn on State Street. There was five or six guys on motorcycles. And when I got ready to turn the left, the man that was to the right of me turned in front of my car. And then he looks at me crazy, like as if to say, hit me if you want to. I'm saying, uh-uh, something has to be done about this, it's ridiculous. I can pause.
Thank you, Pastor. Counselor Letterman.
No, yeah, well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President and Pastor. Thank you for, you know, taking the time this evening to get on and advocate. Because I know that, you know, not only is this impacting you, but it's also impacting your neighbors. And I'm sure, I know you've been in communication with President Hurst, and I'm sure he has, has done the outreach. But he's right, you know, the more people that we have advocating on, on behalf of yourself and your neighbors, hopefully, we can see some change come and the address in question have the proper enforcement that it needs to. And I, you know, I just wanted to say with regard to the neighborhood, I mean, I, I wouldn't question the integrity of any neighborhood in our city. And I just want to assure you that we don't, on the city council, feel that way. I grew up just a couple of blocks away from Pendleton, across State Street on the corner of Bay and Clarendon. Counselor Brown, who's here, lives not far from there and is, is your ward counselor. So certainly, you know, we take any, any threat to the quality of life of all of our constituents seriously. And relative to the ATV and motorcycles, the illegal off-road vehicles that you're referring to, you know, we on the council have really attempted, in partnership with the administration, to give the police department the tools they need in terms of proper fines and ability to pursue those types of tickets and offenses, try to find out where some of those illegal off-road vehicles are coming from as well, and be able to target them that way. So I just want to assure you that I certainly will follow up. I know President Hurst will keep following up. And I just wanted to provide you with my cell phone number, so that if you need to call me directly, the number is four one three.
Wait a minute, please.
Three zero four one.
Can you give me that again, please?
Sure. So that's just two eight five, three zero four one. And, you know, happy to, to, to follow up on the outreach that I'm sure the president has already done. But really, thank you for taking the time this evening to be here on behalf of your neighbor.
And the, and the benefit of you being the only one on public speak out, Pastor, is that you get to have a back and forth dialogue with the four or five counselors that are on this call. As we have our regular meeting scheduled at six thirty, so we have a few more minutes. And I will entertain a hand raised by Counselor Davila, as well as, of course, your ward counselor, Counselor Brown, following Counselor Davila. Counselor, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I may, I wouldn't mind circling around, so I can defer to the ward counselor, Counselor Brown.
Absolutely. Counselor Brown.
God's blessing, Pastor.
Thank you.
Yeah, uh, I'm, uh, yeah, if you know, I'm sure you're familiar with a lot of my family in the neighborhood. I'm a Daniels, Browns, Washington, Cicero's, Burstens, a lot of pastors, JP Morgan.
Yes.
Yep, all my family. So, um.
Yes.
You know, my Aunt Minnie, she's right there on Eastern Ave. Minnie Brown.
I know your Aunt Minnie.
Yep, so, um, anything, anything, anything I can do. I'll make sure that I come by, um, I'll come by and sit down with you sometime this week. And you, any of your concerns, I'll make sure that I address them immediately. My phone, let me give you my phone number. You don't have my number?
I don't.
Okay, let me give you my number. It's a four one three, three one six, four seven four three. And, and, and the good thing about me, Pastor, you can call, I can come and see you any time of the day. Because my job is to help you politically. So you, you're in my district, what I do full time. So you can call me nine in the morning or eight in the morning and nine at night, and I'll come by anytime, and I'll come and sit with you.
I appreciate that.
Thank you, Counselor Brown. Counselor Davila.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief in my comments. Pastor, thank you for joining us and expressing your concern to us. And please be assured that we take our, the concerns very seriously. Mr. President, as the pastor was talking, it occurred to me the amount of complaints that I have, myself even had here in my own ward with regards to people driving and putting the boombox all the way loud, and you can barely hear yourself think. I wonder if the future, if appropriate, we should schedule a meeting with SPD to talk about some of the enforcement. Because after all, this is a fault within the, the noise ordinance that I, I wonder what's going on with that, some of the enforcement in the city. So maybe in the future, we can put that in the docket for a subcommittee meeting, just so that we can start developing a comprehensive approach to deal with some of the quality of live issues that is affecting here at the residents of Springfield. Pastor, thank you for joining us. And, you know, you can, if I can be of help, you can email me at davila@springfieldcityhall.com. D-A-V-I-L-A, D-A-V-I-L-A, at SpringfieldCityHall.com.
D-A-V-I-L-A.
B-D-A.
At City Hall.
SpringfieldCityHall.com, correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Pastor. God bless, and thank you, Mr. President.
So thank you, Counselor Davila, and I certainly will make Counselor Ramos aware of this. And maybe we can have a subcommittee meeting that addresses the noise ordinance and the actual implementation or enforcement of the noise ordinance, or lack thereof for that matter. And so I'd love to actually see exactly how many tickets that they've issued, you know, over the course of the last few months or a few weeks with respect to the noise ordinance. I would imagine that that's, that's not, probably not high on their priority list. But at the same time, they need to be aware that people are concerned, like yourself, Pastor. So we certainly appreciate you coming before the city council for a public speak out. You are welcome anytime. And certainly, you have a, a myriad of numbers that you can reach out to in the near future. I will send a correspondence that, that I've had with the administration, with our administrative assistance to the rest of the council tomorrow morning. And I'm sure you'll also be receiving some follow-up from some of the other counselors.
I appreciate that because when I spoke to the three one one, I guess it's the lady at three one one, or whoever I had to speak with in order to get this information, I explained this to her that it is very tiresome, it is very annoying. They don't seem to have any, any type job description. Nobody seems to work over there. And I don't think, if it's a matter of public funds, that the public fund should be given to people who do this type of activity, who don't seem to care and respect anybody else's privacy, I, I know, at any front. And, you know, I tried, I mind my business over here, and I want my property. I tried, I don't try, I keep it up. And these people, this guy, he might, he's, this, these people that live over there renting, the man that owns the house, he might send somebody over there once. I've seen somebody over there one time since maybe April to cut the grass. He's got trees growing all around his house. It's just, it, it's just a great concern of mine. And I appreciate the time that you all have given me to be able to express myself. I should, I had all, even, I have written down the times when the police have come. I've written down different things and I have, I'm very busy. I just ran in from looking because I'm trying to find a church to buy. So I just ran in to do that, and I didn't have time to even get those type, those times down. But again, I appreciate you all giving me the time to speak out on my concerns about this neighborhood and how I would like to see things change.
We certainly thank you, Pastor, and certainly feel free to keep the, keep the correspondences up between myself and the rest of the council as well. At this point in time, we will conclude our public speak out portion of the meeting. Counselors, if you could please log off and then log back on to the link that says the regular meeting link of the Springfield City Council. I will see you all in a few minutes. And thank you, Pastor.
Thank you.
Okay, looks like we're all set. Thank you, Brendan. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is now six thirty-six on Monday, September thirteenth. And we will begin the regular city council meeting for the city of Springfield. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Counselor Gomez.
Present.
Present. Counselor Whitfield. Absent, Counselor Davila.
We're admitting Counselor Davila now. You might want to circle back around to Counselor Davila.
Okay, Counselor Fenton.
Present.
Present. Counselor Curran. Counselor Curran. Absent, Counselor Ramos.
Present.
Present. Counselor Walsh.
Present.
Present. Counselor Williams.
Present.
Present. Counselor Allen.
Present.
Present. Counselor Letterman.
Present.
Present. Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Present. Counselor Brown.
Present.
Present. Counselor Hurst.
Present. Madam Clerk, can you please recognize, I believe, Counselor Whitfield and Counselor Davila, who I believe have just joined us?
Counselor Whitfield.
Present.
Present. Counselor Davila.
Present.
Present.
And let's, let's try Sean Curran one more time. Counselor Curran, sorry.
That's okay. Counselor Karen.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Will the counselors and their guests please rise for a moment of silence? Will you please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United America.
And to the republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, before we get started, I know this is going to be a long meeting. Just a couple of housekeeping things. Counselor Whitfield did a phenomenal job on Saturday with the Black Lives Matter mural in the city of Springfield. It was historic. I know a number of other counselors were there. I think it was something that really unified the council and certainly unified the city of Springfield. So just wanted to make sure that I went on the record thanking Counselor Whitfield publicly. I appreciate your efforts, and I think it was a phenomenal turnout. And hopefully, we can get to the point where that particular street and that area might remain blocked for a long period of time, certainly longer than the forty-eight hours that it was going to be blocked off for while you were painting. But I think it came out great and really proud of you. You did a great job. Secondly, we have some congratulations in order. Counselor Ramos is our new city, our new state representative for the Ninth Hampton District. Well done. Unfortunately, you made my household a bit more difficult. As you, you did come out victorious. My wife was on the losing end, but certainly, we appreciate your efforts. Very good race, and I think the Ninth Hampton District is in good hands. So congratulations, and you certainly deserve a round of applause. I'm sure if we were in person, we'd definitely be giving you a round of applause. So well done.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Absolutely. And then Counselor, Counselor Gomez, who is our new senator-elect for the Hampton and Congressional District. Well done, really good race as well. And we certainly wish you the best as you go to represent us at the state level. All right, Madam Clerk.
And I meant to say thank you very much. I couldn't, I couldn't get on. So thank you, thank everybody on the council who attended and spoke kind words. And I appreciate all the hard work that anyone involved put into it. And I just wanted to say thank you for those kind words. I couldn't get it to work, but now I got it.
That's all right, Counselor. Thank you.
Mr. President, I just want to say thank you. And I just wanted to correct you that it's the Hampton District, not the Hampton Congressional. I don't, I don't, I don't want to get a side of myself, but I really appreciate the gesture. And I appreciate all my colleagues that are with me in this, in this fight. But, you know, I look forward to representing the city of Springfield and the other two cities to make sure we have a better Hampton District. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely. There, there might have been a little foreshadowing there.
I apologize.
Okay, all right. Madam Clerk, can you please call the first item on the agenda?
The first item on the agenda is reports of committee.
Are there any reports of committee? And if counselors could just raise their hands, what we'll do is we will entertain all of the reports of, of the committee, and then we'll take one vote, accepting all of the reports of committee. So if there are any reports of committee, would you please raise your hand in the queue at this time, Counselor Williams?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would say about two weeks ago, the Maintenance Development Subcommittee met with EverSource and a representative from that entity. The purpose of the meeting was to review any proposed rate hikes that folks have seen in their bills as of late, especially over the summer months. So EverSource provided a pretty comprehensive explanation as to why those rates were increased. They also talked about the kind of delineation between how they do things in Massachusetts as it relates to delivery charges and things of that general nature, with how they do things in Connecticut. And they also sent along, again, a pretty comprehensive explanation of the materials that they do put out for residents to make things such as rate hikes more visible in the communities. So I will certainly be circulating that around to the council that, and feel free to share with your constituents as well. But it was a productive meeting. I think residents, if they did, were tuning in, got, again, a pretty comprehensive explanation as to why they were seeing rates. And down to the fact, you know, simple fact of like, you know, what there is included in their bill and the breakdown of that, which also included, again, the opportunity for residents to, to have onsite, I guess, reviews of the electricity that's flowing through, through their homes that's offered. Can take advantage of that if they'd like. But, um, again, just another thing that residents were not aware of that, I think that meeting brought out. So again, Counselor, Mr. President, I'll certainly circulate that information with the counselors so that I can share with their constituents.
Thank you. Are there any other reports of committee? Counselor Gomez, I see your hand raised.
Thank you, Mr. President. About, in the month of August, I don't really have the exact date. We had a economic and development, economic development meeting surrounded around cultivation and marijuana, where we were at with our next round of marijuana applicants with the administration. We had a number of counselors and also the administration, City Solicitor Ed Bakula, which said that in the month of September, that we'll see some type of progress. As of last Friday, we have been, we have seen that there is progress and that the administration has released two, uh, two recreational sites and two cultivation sites that they're looking for applicants to, to, uh, to apply for. I'm going to be scheduling an economic development meeting specific around the information that was addressed for, that was released on Friday, if not this week, for next week. But then today, this afternoon at four PM, we had an economic development subcommittee. And at the economic subcommittee, we had four agenda items that we spoke about. We had the Chestnut Junior High Site RFP recommendation, which there was three applicants that, uh, down on the old Chestnut Middle School site that the city of Springfield has put out numerous RFPs. But we had three great applicants that, uh, that created some propositions. And the city of Springfield rated that the New North Citizens Council would be the appropriate person, organization. And, uh, they're just waiting for the law department to create the necessary paperwork to make sure that could come forth before us in October to, uh, you know, to, to make sure that, you know, everything is good on their end and to accept that bid from the New North Citizens Council and their partner. Also, today's meeting, we had an update on two, I think, great projects upcoming in, in the districts of, of the downtown district, which we had Roger Roe Burge that was in front of us with the CPC about a year ago on the row houses on Maple Street and also the house, the row houses, I think, and some other homes across the street from his. And they're proposing an H-dip, which is a tax incentive that is given to gateway cities where I know that he's been trying to put the different avenues of different funding to make sure this, this project is successful. We had a really great conversation. That's still an update phase. We're still moving, trying to figure out what the assessor is putting together. He's still, he's still crunching the numbers on that project when it comes specific to the H-dip. And then secondly, the, the Chestnut Street-Aprima Triangle right there on, uh, right across from, uh, from, uh, I forget the building, I apologize. But right there in between Mattoon Street, it's Bridge Street, I apologize, and Hillman, right in that area where Aprima Triangle is, there's an economic development plan that was from Tim Sheen's predecessor, that he wanted to see that really redeveloped. And everything around it's really coming, coming together. I know with the Willys overlay building that just, they had a tour of it that we've seen via mass live. It looks like it's coming on online, so they, they have these proposals. They're looking for some state funding moving forward to make. moving forward to make sure that that project moves forward. We're waiting for some documentation from, I guess, a consulting firm that is working on that with the city of Springfield, which we're really excited, positive, positive things going on there. And then lastly, we had, we're going to be hopefully looking forward to amending the city ordinance, which will allow the removal of the historic exemption on the Springfield Museum, but only the Science Museum. So they could be able to chase that avenue to help them look towards some historical, you know, avenues of some monies. But for the most part, it was a really great productive meeting. Look forward to, you know, figuring out when most of this stuff is going to come in front of us, maybe in the month of October. But for the most part, it was a well-received and look forward to work with the administration to make these things positive and successful.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez. Are there any other reports of committee? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, can we please call the role on accepting the reports of committee?
On accepting the reports of committee, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran? Absent, Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst?
Yes, the reports of committee are approved. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is a special permit for a temporary truck or truck body storage lot at 158 Avocado Street. It was continued from August seventeen.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I just want to, would like to remind councilors that we have heard from all of the petitioners of all of these hearings at our last hearings meeting, and have had ample opportunity to ask relevant questions related to the special permit. There also has been no testimony submitted in opposition to these special permits. Is that accurate, Madam Clerk, to all seven of them?
Yes.
So there's been no testimony submitted in opposition to these special permits unless there are any new questions for the petitioner or debate amongst the council, then we're going to close the hearing and take a vote. So on the first item, are there any, I'm sorry, this looks like Counselor Curran? Counselor Curran, is that you? Counselor, you're, you're breaking up a little bit, Counselor. Madam Clerk, can you please acknowledge Counselor Curran as being present?
My Zoom just was a yes for the last vote, if there was a vote. Guess it was a yes for the last vote. Thank you. Present.
Thank you, Counselor Curran. Okay, so on item, on the first special permit, are there any questions or comments for the petitioner? If so, if you could please raise your hand in the queue, seeing none, is there any debate amongst the council? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the role on this hearing, on this special permit, sorry?
On approving the special permit for 158 Avocado Street, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst?
Yes. Madam Clerk, can you please call the role on the reasons?
On the reasons, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran?
Yeah.
Yes, Counselor Ramos?
Yes, we should probably read the reasons into the record, but yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst?
Yes, Counselor Gomez, can you please read the reasons?
Reason for a granted permit, this specific site is an appropriate location for such use, structure and condition. The use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. Adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use to incorporate the planning staff analysis in the decision at the basis of the findings. Congratulations.
Thank you. The special permit is approved. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is to amend an existing special permit at 740 Boston Road.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any additional questions for the petitioner regarding this special permit? Seeing none, that closes this portion of the hearing. Is there any debate amongst the council? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the role on this special permit?
On approving the special permit, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst?
Yes, Counselor Gomez, can you please read the reasons?
Reasons for a granted, for the granted permit, this specific site is an appropriate location for such a use, structure and condition. The use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. Adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of this proposed use to incorporate the planning staff analysis in the decision at the basis of its findings. Congratulations.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez. Madam Clerk, can you please call the role on the reasons?
On accepting the reasons, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst?
Yes, the special permit is approved. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is to amend an existing special permit at 381 Cooley Street.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any additional questions for the petitioner? Seeing none, that closes this portion of the hearing.
Hold on, hold on.
Okay.
Hold on, please.
Yeah, Counselor Allen, floor is yours.
Mr. President, when we discussed this last time, there was one condition on the, this was a special permit that went from Brooks, you might remember Brooks Pharmacy that was on Cooley Street, then it became Rite Aid, and now it's Walgreens. And in the process of getting the special permit to Walgreens, I don't know, Phil, I assume you're on this call, if you can help me on this. We look back at the conditions that were in the original special permit, and one of them was not fulfilled. I believe it was number five. The tree belt shall be something or other. I can't read it. Am I? Can somebody read that to me? The tree belt shall be?
The original condition back in, I think it was 2006, number five was that the tree belt shall be loomed and seated.
Loomed and seated. And that is the one that is now, it's a mulch, if I'm not mistaken, Phil.
Correct.
So we, so our little quick discussion a month ago was that, did we want to keep that condition? So I, at the time, did not want to remove the condition because I wanted to involve the neighborhood in the decision there because they were in it right from the beginning, and this is Walter Gould and Mary Dion, et cetera. I went back to them and they said they were, they were willing to get rid of the condition. They liked the, they liked the place, they liked the owner, it's, it's well-kept. And they said they don't need that condition. So I'd like to make a motion to remove condition five because the place is doing fine without condition five.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. There's been a motion made by Counselor Allen, seconded by Counselor Gomez. And for those who are on this Zoom meeting, if you could please remember to mute your device, it'd be greatly appreciated. So the motion is made by Counselor Allen, seconded by Counselor Gomez. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the role on the motion?
On approving the motion to remove condition number five, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila? Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran? Counselor Curran? Absent, Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst?
Yes, the amendment is approved. Is there any further debate from the council regarding this special permit? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the role on the special permit?
On approving the amendment to the existing special permit, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst?
Yes, Counselor Gomez, can you please read the reasons?
Reasons for this granting, granting of this special permit, this specific site is an appropriate location for such a use, structure and/or condition. This use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. Adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use to incorporate the planning staff and analysis into this decision at the basis of its findings. Congratulations.
Thank you, everyone, for your support on that.
Madam Clerk, can you please call the role on accepting the reasons?
On accepting the reasons, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos? Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst?
Yes, the special permit is approved. Counselor Whitfield, I see you have your hand raised in the queue.
Yes, I just have a quick question for folks that are new to the permitting process. Are there additional steps that they have to take once approved? Phil, if you could just answer that real quick?
Well, once approved, there's technically a twenty-day appeal period. Once that's done and the special permit is issued by the, by the city count, or I'm sorry, the city clerk, then, then they can move forward. You know, if you're a used car dealer, you then have to get your license from the License Commission. You know, if you're building something new, you may need a review from the Department of Public Works. And obviously, you, you're, if you're building something, you're required to get permits from the building permit, building department.
Okay, thank you. So they would have to wait the twenty days before they can actually put the cars on the lot?
Technically, technically, it's a twenty-day appeal period. If nobody's here in opposition, you know, they can kind of move forward at their own risk. But there is a legal twenty-day appeal before the, before the special permit is finalized.
Okay, and as far as like, if someone needs to like, if it was in the requirements to put up a new sign or fence or all that, can they move forward with that, or do they have to wait until the appeal process is done as well?
I mean, again, they can, they can move forward kind of at their own risk, you know, assuming someone may appeal, but, you know, they can certainly start, start the permitting process to get those signs permitted.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is a special permit for medical, for a motor vehicle service station at 3111 Main Street.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any additional questions for the petitioner? Seeing none, that closes this portion of the meeting. Is there any debate amongst the council? Seeing none, Counselor Davila?
Just for, for my own information, did we ever come to any consensus regarding the direction of Merwin Street? I know we spent significant amount of time talking about Merwin Street, and maybe Counselor Gomez could share light on that.
Counselor Gomez, did you want to speak to that? Counselor Gomez? I see Phil Dromi has his hand raised as well.
Well, this, this special permit, it says motor vehicle sales. He's not selling motor vehicles there. I, I think this is the wrong. Can you read that special permit here? Because motor vehicle sales, it, the mobile is not a motor vehicle, it's a gas station. I don't know why.
It's a, it's a motor vehicle service station.
Service station. I apologize. I misread. So the consensus that I talked to the neighborhood is that, talking to some of the neighborhood board members is there's some things going on with Bay State. We were in a meeting myself and actually Counselor Fenton, and we were talking about, there is some interesting things that's happening on the opposite side of, on Chestnut Street that we are, the neighborhood is looking to, you know, working with traffic on making Merwin Street maybe a one-way. So people can't go up into Merwin Street from off that, that parcel. And then speaking to the, speaking to the neighborhood to talk to the petitioner, because I can't have no conversation with the petitioner during the special permit process. I, I think that there was, what I proposed to the, to the petitioner, which I think is here, that I, I did propose that they do a curb cut, that it's a left turn only. So off of that entrance that's out there on Merwin Street, you can only take a left and then a right onto that highway access. So then anybody that's coming out of that service station cannot take a right. Like moving forward, the neighborhood's going to be having some neighborhood meetings with Merwin Street. So then we can kind of take away from congestion that's going to be created because there is a light on top of where, I think it's Springfield Street and Chestnut Street meet. And there's a corner there that there's going to be some changes because Bay State owns that corner. So there's a working kind of thing going on there that we're still trying to mitigate with us, the, the representatives from Bay State Medical Center. Also conversing with Michael Fenton, because Counselor Fenton and I, that's like a fine line where both of our districts kind of meet. But with that specific location that we're talking about, Merwin Street and those streets, we are trying to figure out a traffic pattern or meet with that, that neighborhood to figure out if one way's moving outward and not into the community would better fit that, that area. I know that they were supposed to meet with, there was one concerned resident on that, on Merwin Street. The neighborhood board and the president of the neighborhood board is supposed to be reaching out to that person. So then they can have these conversations moving forward. I know that they were in their kind of summer, summer months as well. So they're going to be having upcoming meetings this, this, this next kind of fall.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez. Phil, did you have something that you wanted to add?
I, I mean, I would defer to the petitioner if they're here, but I did receive plans late this afternoon that, that do show an update to the curb cut heading out to Merwin Street, and they are proposing it to be a left-hand out turn only, so.
So, so I will make an exception, although I know we've closed this portion of the hearing. I see a Felipe Cravo whose hand is raised. Is, is that the petitioner, Phil?
I believe he's representing the petitioner. The floor is yours, sir.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, my name is Felipe Cravo, Isle of Wexford Associates, 40 School Street. And I just to add-
And I just to add to the discussions that we did revise the plans based on the last city council meeting to make that out a left turn only.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the role on this special permit?
On approving the special permit. Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ramos? Counselor Ramos? Absent, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Williams? Yes. Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Hurst?
Uh, yes. Counselor Gomez, please read the reasons.
This specific site is in appropriate location for such a use, structure, and condition. The use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. Adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use to incorporate the planning staff analysis into the decision at the basis of this findings. Congratulations.
Madam Clerk, can you please call the role on the reasons?
On accepting the reasons. Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ramos? Counselor Ramos? Absent, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Hurst?
Yes, the special permit is approved. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is for a special permit for the expansion of a non-conforming use at 724 Page Boulevard.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any additional comments or questions for the petitioner? Counselor Fenton?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to make sure that we confirm at the last meeting when we had to keep open, we approved some conditions. Madam Clerk, I just re emailed them to you. I just want to make sure that those don't need to be voted on again.
They do not. I'll make sure that it's amended after this hearing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor Fenton. Are there any other questions or comments for the petitioner? Seeing none, that closes this portion of the meeting. Is there any debate amongst the council? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the role on approving the special permit?
On approving the special permit at 724 Page Boulevard. Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Hurst?
Yes. Counselor Gomez, can you please read the reasons?
Reasons for granting the special permit. This specific site is in appropriate location for such a use, structure, and condition. The use as developed will be adverse not adversely affect the neighborhood. Adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of this proposed use to incorporate the planning staff analysis into the decision at the basis of its findings. Congratulations.
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Counselor Gomez. Madam Clerk, can you please call the role on the reasons?
On accepting the reasons. Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Hurst?
Yes, the special permit is approved. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is to amend an existing special permit at 193 Taylor Street.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any additional questions for the petitioner? Seeing none, that closes this portion of the hearing. Is there any debate amongst the council? Madam Clerk, can you please call the role on approving the special permit? And if we could please make sure to mute our devices, it would be greatly appreciated.
On approving, on approving the special permit at 193 Taylor Street. Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Hurst?
Yes. Counselor Gomez, can you please read the reasons, please?
Reasons for a granted for granted permit. This specific site is in appropriate location for such a use, structure, or condition. The use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. Adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of this of the proposed proposed use to incorporate the planning staff analysis into the decision at the basis of findings. Congratulations.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez. Madam Clerk, can you please call the role on the reasons?
On accepting the reasons. Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Whitfield? Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
That's okay. Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Hurst?
Yes, the special permit is approved. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is for a special permit for motor vehicle sales at North Side Worcester Street.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any additional questions for the petitioner regarding this special permit? Seeing none. Is there any further that closes this portion of the hearing? Is there any further debate from the council? Madam Clerk, can you please call the role?
On approving the special permit at North Side Worcester Street. Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Hurst?
Yes. Counselor Gomez, can you please read the reasons into the record?
This specific site is in appropriate location for such a use, structure, and condition. The use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. Adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use to incorporate the planning staff analysis into the decision at the basis of the findings. Congratulations.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez. Madam Clerk, can you please call the role on the reasons?
On accepting the reasons. Counselor Gomez? Yes. Counselor, yes. Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ramos? Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Hurst?
Yes. Was that on the reasons, Madam Clerk? I'm sorry. Did we do the reasons?
That was on accepting the reasons.
Okay, thank you. Special permit is approved. Madam Clerk, will you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is the July revenue versus expenditure report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is anyone present to speak to this item? Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. President. Patrick Burns, 90 Clement Street, Springfield. Tonight you have the July revenue expenditure report. I did want to point out that you'll see there's a negative expenditure amount on your report this month. That was an error that was corrected in August. That was a credit the city received on a prior year bill.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the council regarding this report? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, will you please, Counselor Letterman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Pat, I was just wondering if there was any other particular areas of the report that you wanted to draw our attention to in light of everything going on with the pandemic? I'm just kind of wondering where we are at right now in comparison to where we might have been last year.
We're actually trending pretty close to last year. The the big change this year is the Springfield Retirement Board with the guidance from PARAC has allowed the city to make 112 payments for the first six months on the retirement appropriation. So rather than that large payment we make every year in July, we're able to make 112 payments. And then the board is going to revisit that in December.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman. Are there any other questions or comments from the council? Counselor Davila?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick question, Pat. Regarding to specifically overtime for police. Is that a is that that expenditure reflects including overtime or no?
Yes, that includes overtime. I can give you a further breakdown. I can email that to you.
If you could, please. Yeah.
Certainly.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. Are there any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the role on accepting the report?
On accepting the report. Counselor Gomez?
Yeah.
Yes. Yes. Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton? Counselor Fenton? Absent, Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Hurst?
Yes, the report is approved. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is a petition from EverSource for Chestnut Street.
Is there anyone present to speak to this item?
Chris Segnoli, DPW Director.
Chris, just 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 a quick question before you go. What what items are you speaking to, Chris? On these petitions?
A lot of them. On petitions, I'm going to do all of them.
You're going to do all of the petitions, even the rules of the road?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so why don't we do petitions nine through 13? And see if there are any questions. If there are no questions, then we'll accept all of those petitions together. And then we'll take item number 14 separately.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
First item number nine, EverSource, it's the installation of about 3,300 feet of conduit. Excuse me, along Chestnut Street to service Bay State Medical Center. Item number 10 is a new underground service to service the new Brightwood Lincoln School by EverSource. So the first two items are EverSource. The third item, item 11, is a new underground conduit location about 30 feet of underground line for Verizon on Bay Street. Item number 12 is Columbia Gas of Massachusetts. Abandonment and new gas mains in Johnson, Bloomfield, Earl, and Rainey Street. And item number 13 is the installation of new service for Crown Castle on Liberty Street to service a building up across the street from the Springfield Plaza.
Thank you, Chris. Counselor Fenton, I see your hand is raised, sir.
Thank you. Just on that last one, Chris. Liberty Street, that's a that's a closed Westfield bank. So and and the utilities, I noticed, I just looked at the sketch, it's showing underground utility installation. But the electric lines are all above ground there. So what what specifically is happening and why?
Their installation is for it's for fiber optic for that facility.
And we can't do it above ground? Because that street was recently paved. I mean, that area of Liberty Street was paved. I don't know. I don't have the pave list in front of me. But that was definitely the last five years, I'd say.
So I think it's been outside of the five years, but I know that we reviewed it and they're they're doing, yeah, they're doing underground to the building.
All right, that's okay.
Counselor Williams?
Thank you, Mr. President. Chris, just on that, the item you mentioned for Bay Street, is that the intersection of Berkshire and Bay?
No, it's actually closer down to the intersection of Bay and St. James, right at the bottom of Bay Street.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Where CBS is, that sort of area, that area.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions on petitions nine through 13? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the role on accepting petitions nine through 13?
On on accepting petitions nine through 13. Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Hurst?
Yes, the petitions are approved. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is a petition for the rules of the road.
Is there anyone present to speak to this? I'm sorry, Chris. Chris, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Counselor. And Attorney Shuchuk, I know, is on the line as well. So he may have some items to add as well. Over the last few months, as you know, there's been petitions going back and forth with regard to modifying the rules of the road in relation to the use of horses. And through the last few meetings, this petition that's come in, there has been modifications to some of the rules of the road. We have also put together the formal application for somebody to apply for the for having a horse on the road. And also have finalized all of the rules associated with it. Robert, I don't know if there's anything that you wanted to add to that?
Um, yeah, basically, these rules, they they started because actually, Councilman Hurst, you sent me a video, which is very disturbing, of a of a horse rider at a gas station very late at night. He was almost forcing his horse to do tricks, you know, go up on his two legs. He was forcing the horse, the horse seemed apprehensive, and eventually he went up on his two legs and the horse and the rider came crumbling down. The rider was unhelmeted. So that we decided that we should probably make some rules that the riders should should have to follow for for the safety of the public, the horse riders, and the horses in general. So we put. Um, so we put together a couple of rules that, that we should, we thought would add to the application process. And if, when they apply for an application, they are agreeing to abide by the rules of, of the the rules of the riding a horse, I, I guess is the best way to describe it.
Thank you, uh, Attorney, um, Counselor Davila.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I am going to I, I do have one question, uh, which is kind of eating me. And I see this, uh, on some talk, and I'm going to see if I can actually pull up the, um, the, uh, the permit. It is suggested that the horses are going to be banned from downtown Springfield. Is that correct? Maybe I'm trying to shoot.
Mute.
Yes, they actually already are banned from the central business districts. Um, that's just because Chapter Ninety, Section Fourteen reads, "Every person operating a motor vehicle shall bring their vehicle to a stop when approaching a horse. The horse appears frightened." The general public does not know this rule, um, and it just seems kind of ridiculous for downtown, there are a lot of cars that are downtown to have them all stop and pull over because a horse decides to, to walk down the, the street. Um, it's not enough, it's something that residents are not used to seeing for the last probably eighty, eighty, eighty years of horses riding down the city, city streets of Springfield. So.
I'm not quite sure that I understood your, your legal explanation. Would you mind explaining that to me one more time, sir?
Yeah, we, we had already approved, it was already approved to not allow horses in the central business district because it's, it's the central business district where all the, all the commotion happens, all the, all the car, everyone drives towards, so.
On the, on the west statue, on the west statue, is that there?
Oh, that's, uh, Chapter Ninety, Section Fourteen of the Mass.
Chapter Ninety, Section Fourteen.
Yes.
So if it's approved, why are we, why are we putting it down again?
Well, we're asking to extend the business district too, because it, it ended at West Columbus, but we're asking to extend it to the river, the Connecticut River. Um, because a lot of these horses, horse riders are congregating on East Columbus and West Columbus on, at those gas stations, um, late at night, between like twelve and two in the morning, and they are actually injuring themselves and, and going, going to Bay State Hospital for injuries. Um, and they're admitting it's from riding horses late at night. So we're just trying to, to stop, to.
Can we quantify how many people are getting injured, sir?
Um, no, but there are most, there are multiple videos and emails, uh, from, from the public. Um, I actually have.
Can you forward those emails and videos to me?
Uh, excuse me, can you repeat?
Can you forward those emails and videos to me?
Yeah, I, I actually have a, I, I will do so.
All right, um. I'm just trying to, to, who? Okay, um, Mr. President, I, uh, I have met with some of the people that are going to be impacted with this. We all agree that there has got to be some sort of rules. I, I am very concerned how the kind of legs that this thing is growing. It is my understanding that, uh, since we met and we passed the rules of the road, that there have been riders who have been fined. Now, I have reached out to both Attorney Shu, Shu Shuck, and they reassure me that no people have been fined three hundred dollars. I got people telling me otherwise. So I got conflicting information coming in. Uh, I want to look more into this business of, uh, being banned from, uh, downtown Springfield. And also some of the, all the costs associated with this. Uh, but of course, we all want safety, this paramount is important. But I think we need to be comprehensively looking to this. Uh, I don't feel like spending two or three hours to drive a horse to nice, sir. This is an important issue, it's a safety issue, it's also a cultural issue. So I'm going to respectfully, um, make a motion to send this to, uh, Public Safety Committee, sir.
So there's a motion, uh, made by Counselor Davila to send the rules of the road to the Public Safety Committee. Is there a second to that motion?
I care.
Uh, uh, I'll second it, but I still have to speak on, I guess, on the motion.
Counselor Gomez has seconded it. Uh, is there any discussion on the motion, Counselor?
No, treat in daddy's room if we get there.
Can we make sure, for those who are on this meeting, can we make sure to mute our devices, please? Um, Counselor Gomez, followed by Counselor Williams, and then Counselor Letterman. On the motion.
On the motion, just respect it. Yeah, yeah, no problem. Um, thank you, Mr. President. Um, my question is just, uh, when we last, uh, I think, I guess, heard this, uh, during the summer, in the summer months, and we never ordained that, um, some folks were supposed to get fined as of yet. We were still discussing this, a, am I correct?
Yes, I, I do not believe anyone has been fined. I asked the, um, the sergeant, I think it's lieutenant now, Mel Kotowski, he, he does, he's not aware of anyone being fined for having a horse in the city of Springfield. I asked him, uh, a couple of days ago, so.
All right. Well, I have evidence that after the day that we spoke, I have a ticket from somebody riding a horse the next day. And, and it's not your fault either, you know, it's just the, the fact of the matter is, is that sometimes, uh, enforcing stuff becomes overzealous, and it wasn't ordained yet. So I do have, uh, a, a, a spec, a specific ticket that was issued to a rider, which, you know, I, I am in favor of, you know, making sure that the rules of the road and public safety, and when it comes to animals and animal cruelty, I am a proponent of making sure that these animals are handled with care. But sometimes, um, you know, that maybe he was not aware of it or some address, but I do have the evidence of the ticket. I have the, the picture, so, um, probably tomorrow in, in the morning, you'll see it in your email, so you can have the evidence. But, um, moving forward, uh, if, if you're going to share that information that you said that you've received, uh, with Mr., uh, Counselor Davila, I would love to have that information as well. We just want to make sure that we are, uh, moving in a direction that we have a consensus of when, uh, the police is enforcing this law. Uh, but at the same time, you know, uh, the truth and the fact of the matter is, is that there's a certain community that rides the horses. And I, uh, one, it's one thing to enforce, but to, to, to target is something that, uh, I, I would steadfast, uh, you know, be against. But, but that being said, um, I think that, uh, I was in accordance that, uh, some riders needed a special permit to ride. The application process was, or for, to ride to, uh, approve for the special permit. I think, I don't know if it's ready. Is it ready, um, sir?
Yeah, yes, it is ready. It's actually been, been up and available for about a month or two.
Fantastic, fantastic. Okay, that's great.
It's listed on the, uh, DPW website, the application as well.
Oh, okay.
The road.
Okay, that's, that's perfect, that's perfect. That, that, that's great information, that's seriously. So, um, moving forward, um, we'll talk about it more in, in the subcommittee, because like you said, we're not going to talk about horses all night. But I just wanted to say that I do have evidence that the day after that we did speak on, you know, the rules of the roads and, you know, about the, the fine, somebody did get fined the day after, and I think that sometimes when we're talking about stuff on the city council, that whoever's transferring the in, information to the ones that enforces these tickets have to understand that, uh, there's a process of how and when that they're able to enforce this, because, you know, some of this stuff gets put in committee, and I, uh, I'd just rather us, you know, because then, and on the back end, us as counselors receive those calls and have to do some, some damage control. So, uh, for, with the most part, I, I, I'm with sending it to committee, I'm okay with that, but moving forward, let's just, uh, be able to tighten this up so that we can have a better thing crafted, so we can make sure that the streets of Springfield are safe. And also these, uh, these beautiful animals. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez. Uh, we'll remind councilors, it looks like this might be headed to committee. Um, are there any additional questions? Or comments? Uh, Counselor Letterman, on the motion.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Uh, yeah, I support the motion to committee. I had a few questions myself, uh, relative to some of the rules that were proposed as well as to the, the general permitting process. So I would support putting it in committee. I know we have sixty-two item agenda, so, uh, we can have that conversation at, at the appropriate committee.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman. Counselor Fenton?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to, I want to clarify. I, I believe that we already passed these restrictions on horses.
I'm sorry, yeah, yes, uh, I'm sorry to cut you off, but yes, you did, but you, you proved that the central business district to end at West Columbus Avenue.
But the, from my recollection, Attorney Shu Shuka, the last time we talked about this is that the two major things driving it were that, A, we didn't have an approved application, you wanted to come to us for the application, and, and B, there was some, uh, confusion around what amount of fine should be issued by the police department in the event that there was a violation. And so the goal was to provide clarity on both of those subjects. And I guess now the central business district being expanded as well. But, I mean, the reason I ask that question is because we can go to committee and talk about the specifics about this. But the reality is that today you're not supposed to be operating or riding a horse in the right of way in the city of Springfield without a special permit. And if you are, you can be stopped by police and ticketed for some unknown amount that we haven't set. Is that accurate?
No, um, the, we approved the application itself on June twenty-second, twenty-twenty, and we approved the amount of three hundred dollars. Um, the, the, the problem is, no one has applied for an application. The application, it requires that they should, they prove that their horses are vaccinated. And one main, that vaccination is, it's known as triple E. It's a very dangerous disease. There's like two articles in Mass Live this summer, one on July fifteenth, one on August fifteenth. Though July fifteenth articles, it reads triple E is a rare but potentially fatal disease that can affect people of all ages, and it's generally spread through the bite of infected mosquito. Further on, on, on August fifteenth, it says triple E confirmed in Western Mass. Chickavi, Eusong Meadow, Ludlow, Palmer, and Springfield, and Handland County have been raised as a moderate, moderate risk of triple E. So it's, it's something that if, if the horses are in the city, we need them to be vaccinated from triple E rabies, tetanus, and West Nile virus. So, right now, for horses in the city of Springfield, we have no way of knowing whether they're vaccinated for triple E, which these last recent articles from Mass Live, um, show that it's, it's a pretty big problem, and it's starting to.
Right, but, so then that was good information, especially the first part about, so we already did do the setting of the application and the fee, and we made it three hundred dollars, you said?
Yes.
All right, so that should be discussed in committee, whether or not that's something that should be adjusted, particularly for some of the people that do it in respect of their culture. I, you're never going to convince me that doing it after dark and being at a gas station is an exercise of that same cultural freedom of speech. But, uh, we have to be cognizant of the fact that people may be doing that, particularly during daylight hours, and particularly in safe manners and in safe areas and safe right of ways across the city. So I'll support the motion to committee, but, um, I wanted to ask that question because I was a little lost on where we had been in this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Fenton. There's a, there was a motion made by Counselor Davila, seconded by Counselor Gomez, Madam Clerk, on the motion that's in this item to committee.
On approving the motion to send item number fourteen to committee, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst?
Yes. The motion that's in the committee has been approved, and this will go to the Public Safety Committee. Madam Clerk, can we please call items number fifteen and sixteen together?
Item number fifteen is Berkshire Avenue Traffic Control Agreement, and item number sixteen is Monroe Street Runway.
Good evening, Counselors Chris Segnoli again. Uh, the traffic control agreement, uh, we have a project with Mass DOT, Berkshire Avenue Cottage and RV that is getting ready to go up to bid. Uh, as part of the, every project we do with Mass DOT, as part of the design, we have to sign a traffic control agreement that basically puts into place all of the, uh, traffic items that are being, uh, approved by the state as part of the project. And in your packet, it talks about bike lanes, it talks about right turns, left turns, signage, et cetera. Uh, and so basically what we're doing is that the city is accepting all of the, uh, traffic control agreements as part of that project. Item number sixteen, Monroe Street, as part of the New DeBarry School Project. The school is going to be obviously built, uh, on, uh, Union and Monroe and Eastern. Uh, as part of the project, we, we started working with the designers on it, on the Monroe Street side. Uh, with the schools together, we anticipate a lot of pickup and drop offs. So one of the things that's happening out there now is we have people parking on both sides of the street. So what we did on this was to look at a circular traffic pattern around the site, work with the design team and Pete Garvey, uh, to come up with a one-way on Monroe Street, to the east, and Union Street obviously is one way to the west. So we now have a circular pattern around the site, and we've modified the stop sign at the corner of Monroe and Eastern, uh, to make that safe as well.
Are there any questions or comments regarding these two petitions? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, can you please call the role on accepting the petitions?
On accepting petitions number fifteen and sixteen, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Hurst?
Yes, the petitions are approved. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is an ESG CV two grant and the amount of three million, nine hundred fifty-one thousand, six hundred and four dollars.
Is there anyone present to speak to this grant? Can you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, hi, it's Jerry McCafferty, um, Director of Housing. Uh, this is a three point nine million dollar, uh, grant from, federal grant from HUD. It is funds to respond to homelessness that is resulting from COVID. The city, um, is, has issued a request for proposals to fund, um, organizations in the community to deliver these services. That, that RFP just closed on Friday, so we don't yet know who, uh, we will award the funds to. Um, that's outstanding, but, um, it will provide, uh, outreach, shelter, and rental assistance.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments, uh, Counselor Williams?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, Jerry, I just had a quick question, uh, relative to the outreach portion. And I, you know, this could be in part due to COVID, uh, which I, which I presume. But I've seen an increased rate of panhandlers in the city and folks who are homeless, you know, asking for cash. Um, and it's kind of interesting, because to this degree I have not seen before, especially around like the lower, uh, State Street corridor and, you know, and, and parts of Maine as well. Does, does any of that outreach actually kind of seek folks out who are homeless and asking for cash and, and provide any services to them directly? Is there any direct service component to this?
So yes, we haven't, we, we deliberately put money out for that purpose, um, and, um, agencies to do direct street outreach as well as, um, offer motel placements to those people to get them off the streets. One of the things we know is, uh, there is, uh, the Taylor Street Shelter is closed for the summer right now. And the closure of many other places that people are in, go inside during the day has definitely resulted in an uptick in the street population. So we're hoping to get this money out quickly to be able to, uh, rectify some of that and provide services to those folks.
That's great. So, no, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Brown?
If, where, where would, um, where would I point people to get that information? Where would I?
It, it, the RFP itself closed last Friday, so, um, within a week, we'll award funds and we'll know which agencies. Um, and we would direct them to the agencies, but, um, the agencies that are. But the agencies that applied are the ones that currently provide services to homelessness. So you know, I would expect they could contact Catholic Charities, Health Services for the Homeless, Friends of the Homeless, those sort of basic wayfinders, those agencies that are doing this work all the time.
Yeah, because I know Wayfinders has something available. I had spoken with them because it seems to me from what I've been, my research is that most of the people in the community that's homeless, a lot of them, a lot of them, the requirements as far as being able to obtain an apartment is very difficult as far as the credit score and the actual having, you gotta have triple year rent. So I was trying to, kind of like working on something where we have like a cosigner department. I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't know if it's something we can do at the city, but something where we co-sign for someone for a few months, giving him credit repair classes and actually going in and co-signing for him. But I thank you for what you do. Thank you.
There's an agency willing to do that, but these funds actually allow landlords incentives so that an agency can pay sort of a fee just for the landlord agreeing to rent to someone. So I think some of that has been, you know, that has never been allowed in this funding source before. I think some of it is responding to the idea that people who are hard to house need some additional support. So if they can offer more money upfront to the landlord, maybe that will help the landlord be willing to take a risk on a tenant that they wouldn't otherwise.
Thank you. Thank you for everything you're doing. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Counselor Brown. Are there any other questions from counselors? Jerry, are you also speaking to item number 20 as well?
Yes, I am.
Okay, do you want to, we'll take that item out of order if there are no objections. And can you also speak to that item so we can take it up in one vote?
Yes. So this is a state grant that addresses youth homelessness. Youth are people up to age 25. This is a grant that we get annually, but the way that they do it is they just add another year and they add more funding on it. So this is something, this is our third year of this grant. They're adding $446,000 for this year. This is a grant where we pass the money on to Gandara and CHD's Safety Zone Program. And again, it is addressing homelessness, this time with that particular young population.
Thank you. Jerry, Counselor Letterman?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Jerry, obviously, you know, I'm going to vote to approve the grant, but given that it's the, you know, multi-year grant that we've continued to get, if your office could just forward to us some data on the results that Gandara is getting, you know, the particular numbers of people they're serving and what the outcomes there are, I would appreciate it.
Yes, is that to you or to the whole council?
To the entire council.
Yeah, just send it to the whole council.
Yep.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman. Madam Clerk, can we please call the role on accepting grants number 17 and 20 if there are no further questions?
On accepting grants number 17 and 20 together, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Hurst?
Yes, the grants are approved. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is in order accepting Mass Gaming Commission Grant Contract Amendment for $1,187,896.
Is there anyone present to speak to this grant? Can you please state your name and address for the record?
Vanessa Lima, Springfield Police Department, 70 John Quill Drive, Springfield. So this grant is for the FY21 GEU in the amount of $1,187,896.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments regarding this grant from the council? Counselor Gomez?
Can I get a little bit more of a definition of what's this money for? It's going to the police department and for what reason? I'm just curious.
So I'll give you my best explanation, but usually our Lieutenant Akers is, heads up this unit, and he is currently on injured, on duty leave. So I will, I usually hand over financials, so I will try to give you my best explanation. So for the gaming enforcement unit, we are in charge of providing, I believe, six to seven officers that head up the security and policing surrounding the casino area. And this money, that's what that money is used for, is for their salaries and overtime benefits, health, everything like that for this unit.
So it's only, it's only for the outside perimeter? Because I know that we do have some officers that are stationed inside. Is that for those officers as well?
Vanessa, TJ, I can answer that question for you.
Okay, thank you.
Can you state your name and address for the record, TJ?
Park Capital, Darkwood Street here in Springfield. The gaming enforcement unit is a grant that we are, we get from the gaming unit to subsidize the police department, six officers and one lieutenant that's dedicated exclusively to the MGM property. So they're the ones that the state police has their unit, we have our unit, and that the state's committed to pay for fringe salary and all fringe benefits, the Quinn, overtime, uniform, and any other necessary items that the police department needs. It's a reimbursable grant from the gaming enforcement unit.
So, sorry, Mr. President, just one last question. So we, we pay upfront and then they reimburse the city for what we pay into it? Yes?
Yeah, so we filled out a grant application for the gaming enforcement unit, asking them to cover all the costs associated with hiring the officers and lieutenant in the MGM property.
All right, great. Well, I just wanted to get a little bit more because there's so much money that comes in and out specific to, you know, MGM and stuff like that. I just, I know with the pandemic, I just wanted to better understand it, but you know, great work, Ms. Lima, and I hope for a speedy recovery on the lieutenant. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez, Counselor Whitfield. I did see your hand raising a Q. Was your question answered, Counselor?
Yes, my question was answered, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Brown, followed by Counselor Davila.
Yes, I'm just, so you guys saying you guys spent a million dollars for protection around the casino? I'm curious, how far up is that parameter? Because a lot of, for some reason, I think that a lot of people forget that all you do is have to go up two lights and then you're in Ward Four. And when you look at the statistics, we have the most violence, we've had the most disruptive because all they do is come right from the casino to stoplights and they're right there where we are. Do we get some of that police presence? Because we need it. Do we do, do you guys, can you guys do a Peter Pay Poll? The million dollars, you get those six cops, can you hire six more and send them down to my district?
So, Counselor, I can answer that question. So this money is solely dedicated for inside the casino for the internal unit that was created by both the state police at the Springfield Police. They created rules of engagement. However, having them fund these, we were able to fund the downtown metro unit that is necessary to do, to address all of the needs that you're talking about, that go on State Street and the north end to the south end. That's, that's why we have a whole unit. I don't have the numbers off my head. I want to say there's 15 new officers, a couple sergeants, and maybe lieutenant, but I can get that information for you. But that's the metro unit that you need to rely on.
I would, what I'm curious is that it always, yes, I understand that it does stretch north and south, but it doesn't come up the hill. You've seen that evidence when the fireworks hit. You've seen everyone, and like I said, it's only, you're talking about a light from the casino and then you're right there up the hill in my district. I'm aware we have this surveillance, so you do see the people who are doing it, but they were saying we don't have the police presence to address firecrackers. So I'm just curious, will you guys be looking to give us a little bit more support in my district?
I can only talk to the commissioner about climate strategy, but I'll absolutely take it up with it when I do go there tomorrow, or Wednesday, sorry.
All right, thank you. I appreciate you.
You, Counselor Brown, Counselor Davila, followed by Counselor Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. President. TJ, the security that they provide at the MGM is fantastic. I know the few times that I've been there, I have observed that they've done nothing but professional work, both the state police and our guys on the perimeter. But maybe you could shed a little bit more light onto this issue to me. I wasn't aware of this grant, TJ. And guess what I'm going to confuse is, right now, there's six guys and one lieutenant on that detail, correct?
That's correct.
Now, this is $1,187,000 for seven guys?
Correct.
And, because that works out to be $169,000 per guy.
Yeah.
So are they getting, are they getting the, are they only getting that overtime themselves, the seven guys? Or is the overtime spread out for everybody?
Well, it depends on the deployment. What I'm looking at here is for the six officers, it's $232,000 annually for their salaries. For the lieutenants, $104,000 annually. Then you add in 25% for fringe and indirect costs. Quinn, education incentive for the lieutenants, around $26,000. And the officers, $6,000. Then you also have uniforms, overtime, and equipment for a total grant of $1.18 million.
So how much overtime are these guys putting in?
Overtime, total budget is $340,000 budgeted, approved in this grant application.
So those $340,000, are those seven guys the only ones that could do the overtime? Or can any other officer pick up the overtime?
I would say that's most likely the case, but I'm going to clarify that with the commissioner.
Well, I, so I can clarify that.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear TJ's answer.
Vanessa actually says she can clarify, so.
Yes. So, so those are designated officers that have been authorized to work that metro unit, GEU, designated overtime, you know? And those are the six officers and one lieutenant that are designated to protecting MGM and the GEU unit.
So, so that I'm clear then, the only officers that have access to that overtime is the six guys and the one lieutenant that work there?
Yes, correct, correct.
So that means that every guy is guaranteed, potentially guaranteed, $48,000 a year on overtime?
I don't know if it's a nice neat connection like that, because I think it's just a budgeted amount, and then actuals will be based upon the need in the unit or in the MGM.
So I can tell you that this award is based on estimates for the year, and it's reimbursed based on actuals. So. Yes, correct. It's that the police department requested to the gaming commission for the year, and then the gaming commission gives them the reimbursement just based on the actuals that we actually pay the officers. So this is just the estimated budget. It's no, it's not a guarantee. It's just the best guess at the time for the ask to the GEU, to the Mass Gaming Commission.
Did I hear you guys say, did I hear say that this is an individualized, specialized unit, so you have to go to some sort of extra training to work in this detail?
Yes. So basically, what it was, is the state came in and said, you know, state police put their unit in, we put our unit in, and we negotiated terms and conditions, for lack of a better word, of who has responsibility, when, where, and all that stuff, inside and then outside, all that stuff. So all that's been articulated through negotiations with all relevant parties.
Counselor Davila, if we could just be mindful that there are other counselors.
I do have more questions, but I think it will be appropriate at some other time. Thank you, TJ, for, Ms. Lima, for clarifying.
Thank you, Counselor Davila, Counselor Ramos.
Mr. President, thank you. Looking at these numbers, is, so Lindsay, thank you for that explanation. That really cleared it up for me. That was my question number one was whether or not it was based on actual. How is, how has COVID, the COVID crisis and the fact that the casino hasn't been open, how has that affected this projection?
I have not looked at this projection, given that they were closed. I'm not really sure. I haven't talked to the gaming commission. I think we'll have to have a conversation with them once we file our next quarterly report that's due to them, get a sense of what they're thinking in terms of reimbursement. We're not going to submit for officers not working if MGM was closed. So they may not allow us to reallocate other staff. I mean, there might just be things we need to back to the gaming commission about options.
I can interject, I'm sorry. So we were able to reimburse for limited security details, just, you know, to protect the vicinity around the casino, what they allotted for us. So there was limited. It wasn't the, you know, necessarily the full amount.
All right, that helps, thank you.
To Counselor Ramos, if there are no further questions, Madam Clerk, can you please call the role on accepting the grant?
On accepting item number 18, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Hurst?
Yes, the grant is approved. Madam Clerk, will you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is a DPW mitigation and recovery grant in the amount of $550,011.
Chris, were you speaking to this item?
Good evening, Counselors Chris and Golly, I'll speak on this item.
Chris, can you also speak to, you're also speaking on items 22, 25, and 27, correct?
22, 26, 27, 29, and 31.
Okay, we're only doing 26 and 27. We're not going past 26 and 27. So if you could speak to those four items that you have, it would be greatly appreciated, and then we'll vote on all of those items at once.
Sure, Counselors. And if I may, I'm just going to jump ahead to number 26 because it'll make number 19 here. Last year, the city of Springfield received a $300,000 grant from Mass DOT. I'm speaking now of item number 26. And we received it in two chunks. One was 150 last year, and one was 150 this year. The way Mass DOT, or excuse me, DCR, provided us the funds, they only released it half at a time. So we came to the council last year for the first 150, and we're coming to the council to approve the second 150, which is item number 26. And it is money that is being used for the design of the McKnight Rail Trail. Item number 22 is we applied for a second round grant for that same project, and were awarded the $300,000 again. However, this time, they said we could accept it in all one-month sum. Why we have 22 as $300,000. Those two items are two different grants, but it is both the McKnight Rail Trail project for us to use for design purposes moving forward. Item number 19, DPW mitigation grant. It is an award from NEMA and FEMA. The DPW made an application in early 2019, and we were recently notified by FEMA of our award at the intersection of South Branch Parkway and Briarwood Avenue. There is a significant drainage structure, a drainage pipe. There is a significant drainage structure, a drainage pipe that extends out into uh, Water Shop's pond that is in grave danger of failing. Uh, so we made the application to MEMA and FEMA for the replacement of uh, the drainage structure. There's a manhole structure there that's about twenty-five feet deep, uh, that needs to be completely replaced. We have sewer lines, water, gas around it, uh, so it is a very expensive uh, uh, replacement. Uh, item number twenty-seven, uh, DPW Shared Streets and Spaces Program through Mass DOT. Uh, DPW made an application, uh, probably about a month and a half ago for a number of locations in downtown. Uh, Mass DOT had put out a notice that uh, municipalities would be eligible to enhance areas uh, for sidewalk, better biking, better pedestrian, as well as use for um, uh, restaurants, et cetera. Uh, the initial application for some downtown space was denied. Uh, we then made a second application to Mass DOT for a hundred thousand dollars and was granted. This hundred thousand dollars is going to be used for a uh, enhanced crosswalk at the intersection of St. James Avenue and Wellesley Street, uh, where there is no crosswalk at this location uh, at this point, so we are going to be putting in uh, crosswalk beacons, uh, bump outs, uh, et cetera, to make that area safer.
Sounds good.
And just the, the only other thing, item number, on the item number twenty-seven, the shared streets, uh, Councilor Williams, this was something me and you had spoken about, about eight months ago or nine months ago?
Yes.
That location, we had received some uh, comments from the neighborhood, so uh, that's why we were targeting, targeting that area.
Great, great.
And you don't need any other information on item twenty-nine or thirty-one, correct?
To hear, thank you, Chris.
Perfect, thank you.
Mr. President, I believe you muted.
You sound very low and Marcus did as well. I can hear you very faint, like you're far away.
Mr. President, if you don't, if you don't mind, I did have my hand up, um, I can't hear, we can't hear you, Mr. President, but if you don't mind, I have some questions and uh, comments regarding this item. Um, uh, first of all, Chris, thank you for that presentation and I appreciate you um, sharing the information with me uh, when I requested it a, a few months ago. If you recall, um, to my colleagues, um, I, I brought this up a few weeks ago. Um, when the application was denied, uh, we actually submitted, as Chris said, uh, two proposals jointly and uh, both were denied. Um, and, and uh, at the time, uh, there had been fifty projects that were approved uh, across forty-four different municipalities, across Commonwealth. Uh, at the time, there were five million dollars that were available and three point eight had been already given out and Springfield had received, received zero. Um, not only that, but again, they, they denied our, our, our application. So um, I submitted a, a letter along with uh, several of my colleagues who signed on to that letter. Uh, thanks to um, Council Gomez, Council Letterman, Edwards, Williams, and uh, Council Whitfield who signed on to the letter, um, appealing that decision from the, uh, from the governor and uh, from DOT and the Secretary of uh, um, DOT. So um, you know, thankfully, we were able to resubmit the, the application and got approved for the second phase uh, of that um, application. Uh, but I also wanted to point out, Chris, and I'm sure you're aware of this, the governor recently doubled the amount that was being made available for this grant from five million dollars to ten million dollars. Um, applications are being accepted through September twenty-second, which is roughly a week away. Um, and in addition to some of the previous requirements, um, they've also extended and expanded some of the things that we can apply for in these grants, including uh, outdoor patio heaters, which would allow for outdoor dining, um, and for, um, you know, some of the, the businesses, local restaurants to offer outdoor dining, um, during the fall months. So um, I'm wondering, Chris, if we're, if we've looked at any possibilities to submit any additional applications before the deadline? And uh, and I also wanted to share that information with my colleagues, because if you have any ideas in your own districts, in your own neighborhoods, uh, that you think would be, would benefit from this sort of grant, um, you know, the, uh, I, I think this will be a great benefit to, to a lot of businesses that are currently struggling.
Counselor, yes, we have, we, um, as a matter of fact, Andy, uh, city engineer Andy Carr and myself, we were talking about that today. He's gotta do some research on it, because we're trying to figure out if we do something, especially like with heaters, is that something that, you know, is, is the city gonna go out and buy them? Do we give them? Uh, we wanna figure out that process internally to make sure that it can work. Uh, and we will most likely be making some other applications with that as well. Now, just for the counselor's um, information, the reason why they denied us is because they said they didn't think we could have it done in time, which I wasn't really happy about, because we told them we could. Uh, and lastly, the governor has uh, extended the outdoor dining, uh, another sixty days, regulation-wise, so it basically brings us to the end of the year at this point. So um, because I believe it was gonna expire November first, so it gets, basically gets us to January first to keep these businesses open outdoors. So we're looking into that, we just need to figure out about, uh, you know, is that something that we're gonna name some restaurants? The, the, the heaters would go to them? Or is it something that the city's gonna end up with twenty-five of these things that we gotta hand them out to somebody somehow? And uh, so we gotta figure that out, but he's doing that research on that today, tomorrow.
Now, I appreciate your efforts and I appreciate his efforts, he's the, you know, he did a great job communicating with us uh, in Indian Orchard, in East Springfield, so, uh, great job, uh, I support it a hundred percent and uh, let us know if there's anything that we can do to, to help.
No problem, thank you.
Uh, can you guys hear me now? Can you hear me?
A little bit.
Very low.
Extremely low.
Can you hear me now?
There you go.
All right, Councilor.
Um, I wanna thank you, Chris, for uh, all your effort with the McKnight area and those crosswalks. I know it's been a, a fight. Uh, do you know exact, do you know around the time it, that those uh, crosswalks are gonna be starting uh, being worked on? I have a lot of people um, calling me about it.
That's, that's probably gonna start within the next ten days.
Oh, great, you're a lifesaver. Thank you.
And yes, we put a, put a requirement on it, all the money has to be spent, I think it's by like October fifteenth, so they really didn't give people a lot of time to do things.
Oh, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Brown, are there any other questions uh, on any of these four grants? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, can you please call the role on accepting these four grants?
I just have a quick question, Counselor, were you taking twenty-nine and thirty-one separately?
Uh, those are under fifty thousand dollars, so we're gonna take all those together, so yes.
Okay, okay. On accepting grants number nineteen, twenty-two, twenty-six, and twenty-seven together, Council Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Council Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Council Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Council Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Karen?
Yes.
Yes, Council Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Council Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Council Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Council Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Council Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Council Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Council Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Council Hurst?
Yes, the grants are approved. Madam Clerk, can you please call items number twenty-one and twenty-three together, please?
Item number twenty-one is for assistance to firefighters grant in the amount of three hundred thirty thousand, four hundred seventy dollars and nine cents. That was twenty-one and which number, Counselor, I'm sorry?
Twenty-three.
And twenty-three is FY twenty assistance to firefighters grant in the amount of two hundred seven thousand, five hundred eighty-one dollars and sixty-four cents.
Thank you, is there anyone present to speak to this grant? If you could please state your name and address for the record, it'd be greatly appreciated. Is there anyone present to speak to these grants? TJ, can you?
Yeah, Mr. President, I actually, um, I thought Commissioner Calvi was on the line getting ready to speak on the firefighter grant. What number, uh, do you wanna talk about the first right now, twenty-one?
Twenty-one and twenty-three, which are both his.
Yeah, so uh, we were awarded three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars from FEMA.
I'm here.
Commissioner Calvi's here, Commissioner, the floor is yours.
So the first grant is the COVID relief grant that we received through FEMA. This grant will reimburse the expenses that the department has laid out to increase uh, COVID-nineteen supplies that we already purchased through deficit spending. And the other part of that grant will allow us to further build our stockpile in case of a second wave comes upon us. The second grant is for three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, that came from the firefighters to us, assistance to firefighters grant program. That grant is gonna be used for uh, training of all new officers for firefighter one, or fire officer one, fire officer two, and training officer, that'll cover backfill, overtime, and training, and to train all of the district chiefs to be incident safety officers. We cover backfill and overtime.
Thank you, Commissioner, are there any questions or comments regarding this grant? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, can you please call the role on accepting these two grants?
On accepting grant number twenty-one and twenty-three, Council Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Council Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Council Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Council Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Karen?
Yes.
Yes, Council Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Council Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Council William?
Yes.
Yes, Council Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Council Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Council Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Council Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Council Hurst?
Yes, the grants are accepted. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is item number twenty-four, FY twenty-one Senior Community Services Employment Grant for one hundred eighty-three thousand, four hundred and one dollars.
Is there anyone present to speak to this grant?
I am, Counselor.
Please station a name, address for the record.
Sandy Federico, Bradley Road, Springfield, Mass. Uh, the Department of Elder Affairs would like uh, to accept this grant to run our CSEP program, which is an opportunity for us to train um, for unemployed seniors uh, to get back into the workforce.
Thank you, are there any questions or comments from the council regarding this grant? Seeing none, Madam Clerk. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, can you please call the role?
On accepting grant number twenty-four, Council Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Council Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Council Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Council Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Karen?
Yes.
Yes, Council Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Council Walsh? Council Walsh? Absent, yes, I'm sorry, Council Walsh is, yes, Council Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Council Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Council Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Council Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Council Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Council Hurst?
Yes, the grant is approved. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda? Which I believe is item number twenty-five.
I believe we approved twenty-five already, uh, no, we didn't. Okay, so item number twenty-five, health services for the homeless supplement in the amount of one hundred and forty-six thousand, four hundred and four dollars.
Is there anyone present to speak to this grant?
Good evening, Councilors, Helen Carlton Harris, Commissioner, Division of Health and Human Services, City of Springfield, Forty-seven Overlook Drive. This grant is to support our health center. Uh, it is primarily for COVID-nineteen, to increase our testing, to increase personnel, and to increase our clinical supplies.
Thank you, Commissioner, are there any questions or comments for the Commissioner? Seeing none, uh, Madam Clerk, can you please call the role on accepting this grant?
On accepting grant number twenty-five, Council Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Council Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Council Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Council Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Karen?
Yes.
Yes, Council Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Council Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Council Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Council Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Council Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Council Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Council Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Council Hurst?
Yes, grant is approved. Madam Clerk, can you please call items twenty-eight through thirty-seven together?
Item twenty-eight is a Mass Hill grant, item twenty-nine is a Carter Street Robbins Road Industry Abdonation, item number thirty is a Family Literacy Advocacy Grant, item number thirty-one is Increase in Funding, Chapter Ninety, item number thirty-two is Virtual Programming for Distance Learning Grant, item number thirty-three is Donation of Goods, item number thirty-four is Elders Donations, item number thirty-five is Donation of Goods, Hand Sanitizers and PPE, item thirty-six is Springfield Library Donations, and item number thirty-seven is also Springfield City Library donations.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, can you please call the role on accepting these grants?
On accepting grants twenty-eight through thirty-seven, Council Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Council Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Council Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Council Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Council Karen?
Yes.
Yes, Council Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Council Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Council Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Council Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Council Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Council Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Council Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Council Hurst?
Yes, the grants are approved. So before we get to the orders, uh, I am going to take two-minute recess as I need um, and we will reconvene at eight twenty-five, we'll reconvene at eight twenty-seven.
Must be good, Adam, I believe it is.
I've got a recesser, I could piss.
I've got a recesser in the office. Hello, I'm not muted?
No, you're not muted, okay?
No, we hear it all, everything you've got going on over there.
All right. All right, son.
My bad.
Brendan, are we ready to go? All right, Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is number 38, Bills of Prior Year from Various Departments.
Is there anyone present to speak to this item?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Lindsey Hackett, Deputy CFO, AD Tamrac Drive in Springfield, Mass. This is order to cover $5,570.59 worth of bills of prior year from FY20 for services rendered for TJO, the Police Department, and the Office of Management and Budget.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments regarding this order from the council? Seeing none, this requires a two-thirds roll, call vote for passage. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll on suspending Rule 19 and take this order up in one vote?
On suspending Rule 19, Counsel Gomez. Counsel Gomez. Absent, Counsel Whitfield.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Curran.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ramos.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh. Counsel Walsh. Absent, Counsel Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Letterman.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hurst.
Yes, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll on the order?
On approving order number 38, Counsel Gomez. Absent, Counsel Whitfield. Yes, Counsel Davila.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Curran.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ramos.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh. Absent, Counsel Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Letterman.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hurst.
Yes, can you please acknowledge Counsel Gomez to vote on this order?
On approving order number 38, Counsel Gomez.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Order is approved. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is 39, Order Authorizing Mayor to Execute Quick Claim Deed for South Side St. James Boulevard.
Thank you. Is there anyone present to speak to this order?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
I can. We can. Can.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Attorney Melvin Altman, Springfield Lot Department, 15 Cedric Street, Springfield, Mass. This is a vacant foreclosed lot on the south side of St. James Boulevard, which was offered for sale pursuant to an RFP. And a butter 90 Turmar Property LLC was named preferred developer upon a recommendation of the RFP Review Committee. The developer will install a parking lot on the property. Use this parking for their adjacent business, which currently has only on-street parking. This order authorizes the mayor to execute the deed for the transfer title.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments regarding this order from the council? Seeing none, this requires a two-thirds roll, call vote for passage. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll on suspending Rule 19 and take this order up in one vote?
On the suspension of Rule 19 for item number 39, Counsel Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Curran.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ramos.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Letterman.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hurst.
Yes, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll on accepting the order, on approving the order?
On approving the order, number 39.
Yes.
Counsel Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Curran.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ramos.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Letterman.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hurst.
The order is approved. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is number 40, An Order Authorizing the Transfer of City Land to the Border Park Commissioners.
Is there anyone present to speak to this item?
I am Council President Patrick Sullivan, Executive Director of Parks, Buildings, and Recreation, 17 Irvin Street, Springfield, Mass. This vote is required by the council for the city-owned parcels that will create the new Debury Park. It will join the private parcels that you voted on, I believe, about three to four months ago to make up this new park.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, this requires a two-thirds roll, call vote for passage. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll on suspending Rule 19 to take this order up in one vote?
On the suspension of Rule 19 for item number 40, Counsel Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Curran.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ramos.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen. I mean, I'm sorry, Counsel Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Letterman.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hurst.
Yes, Counsel Ramos, before we take the vote on the order.
Mr. President, very quickly, I just want to thank everyone that's involved in making this project happen. Pat from your department, TJ, your department. You guys have done a phenomenal job, considering the fact that, you know, even with this pandemic, I don't believe this project has been delayed at all. You know, you guys have continued moving forward and pressing forward and making it happen. So I just wanted to commend you all on a job well done. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you to the whole council as well.
Thank you, Counsel Ramos. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll on approving the order?
On approving order number 40, Counsel Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Curran.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ramos.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Letterman.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hurst.
Yes, the order is approved. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is number 41, Order Transferring Control of City Land to the Department of Public Works.
Is there anyone present to speak to this item?
I am Counselor, Fire Commissioner Calvi.
More's yours.
This contract is, you're voting on giving us permission to go beyond a three-year contract to sign a five-year contract with Motorola for service and maintenance of the C-MED system for the City of Springfield.
Madam Clerk, is that the item we're on, or am I off here?
I think it's.
No, we're on, we're on number 41, the Transfer of Control of City Land.
Yes, that's, that's. City of Springfield. We're asking that approximately 90 square feet and 300 square feet of land that is currently part of southeast side Berkshire Avenue be transferred to the DPW to complete the Harvard Cottage and Harvey Street intersection improvement projects.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments regarding this project? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll on suspending Rule 19 and take this order up in one vote?
On suspending Rule 19 for item number 41, Counsel Gomez.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Whitfield.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Davila.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Fenton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Curran.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ramos.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Letterman.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Hurst.
Yes, Counsel Fenton, followed by Counsel Ramos.
Mr. President, in the interest of time, could we, the next suspension of Rule 19, could we just do it for all the items on the agenda? So we don't have to do it for each one? If that's all right with you and the clerk?
So she and I have had this conversation. But I'll defer to the clerk, because as, I'm like you. I was trying to find ways to shorten the time in which we were going to be here this evening. So, you know, I'll defer to the clerk. If it's possible, I would love to do that.
Please, Madam Clerk.
No, that's fine. My suggestion was to suspend Rule 19 for all of them at one time together.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
No problem. I appreciate you guys, too.
So I'll make a motion to do that, Mr. President.
Second. Second.
Second.
Second.
I think the only fear in that, Counsel Fenton, and I'm certainly with, I'm certainly with you, is that if somebody actually objects to the actual item. But I guess we'll cross that bridge when we get there. And we won't get there. So there's a motion on the floor to suspend Rule 19 for items, for the rest of items.
Forty, 42 to 61.
To 61. It was seconded by Counsel Gomez.
Yes, sir.
Mr. President, point of order, sir?
Ah, yes.
Just, I'm not necessarily opposed to that. I think it will be very good for the beneficial time. However, is there any way that we can keep item 61 off the motion? Because I do have some questions in that.
Sure. And can we amend the motion, Counsel Fenton, to include item number 42 to 60? As opposed to 42 to 61, and we'll take item number 61 separately?
That's fine. So moved.
Is there a second to that amendment?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Walsh.
President, on the motion?
Yes, Counsel Ramos.
On the motion, Mr. President. I hate to be the one to bring. There's a reason why there's a Rule 19. All financial orders, every transfer of finances requires separate readings and separate meetings. And we typically suspend Rule 19 in order to take the matter up in one single vote. That's why we do so. However, if they, that, every suspension of Rule 19, as we know, has to be done unanimously. And so if there's one single objection that we cannot suspend Rule 19. And so if counselors have any questions or concerns regarding one single item, and they would prefer more information, then typically that would be an opportunity for a counselor to extend the item to a separate meeting. So I hate to be the one to do it, but I think that we have to respect the rules and we have to take each individual item on its own, on its own merits. So I have to object to, to this motion. I don't necessarily want to object to the, I mean, I guess it's.
That's fine. That's fine.
I don't object to it for every, every item. Yeah.
So there.
That's fine.
It has been objected by Counsel Ramos, Madam Clerk. Item number 41.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
If I may say, is it possible, if I could make a motion, we take item 61 out of order? And then maybe we can go back to the original plan?
I object.
So.
One by one, it is.
Counselor Davila has made a motion to take item number 61 out of order.
Yeah, I was objected to.
That's been objected by Counsel Fenton. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the, on the agenda? Counsel Gomez, I see your hand is raised. You.
Yeah, yeah, yes, Mr. President. And I think that I'm, I'm ahead of myself, and I apologize. I actually, I'm just going to reserve my right to just be quiet.
Counsel Ramos, I see your hand is still raised, sir.
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. I believe we're still on item 41. We haven't voted on the item, and I'd like to comment.
Madam Clerk, did we vote on item number 41? Did we vote on the order itself?
Yeah, I believe the, suspend the Rule 18, Mr. President.
Madam Clerk, I think we're suspending Rule 19 after we had already approved item number 41. And we're going to suspend Rule 19 for items number 40 through, 42 through 60, 61. So I believe we completed item number 41, but I will defer to the clerk. Madam Clerk? Madam Clerk has some connection issues. Madam Clerk?
Can you hear me, counselors?
I can now, yes.
I'm sorry, my computer completely shut down on me like at the perfect time. I'm sorry, I missed the discussion. So what did you guys decide for Rule 19?
So, so Rule 19 has been objected to. We are going item by item. I think the question now is whether we've taken a final vote on the order for item number 41.
Yes, we have.
We have. That's what I thought. Did you, did you want to say something, Counsel Ramos? I certainly will defer to you, but I, but we have already approved that order. So if you want to say something, then you certainly can at the moment.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember voting on the order. I thought we, but if the clerk says we did, then we did. And I, and I will, I'll reserve my comments.
Thank you, Counsel Ramos. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is item number 42, An Order Authorizing Expenditure of Mass Gaming Commission Impact Mitigation Grant. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, that's it.
Is there anyone present to speak to this item?
Good evening, Mr. President, Attorney Thomas Moore, Associate City Solicitor, City Law Department, Allwin Place, Springfield, Massachusetts. I'm here for orders number 42 and 43. Both of these are orders authorizing acceptance of grant funds from the Massachusetts Gaming Commission for specific impact grants. Both of them also authorize memorandums of understanding with the Springfield Parking Authority to administer and spend those funds for their purposes. Number 42 is for grant funds for the revitalization and restoration of the city stage unit. As the council is probably aware, focus Springfield is due to enter into a lease agreement with the Parking Authority to occupy a significant portion of that. to occupy a significant portion of that space and renovate it to make a television studio and public access space for the community. So three hundred thousand dollars is going towards that build-out, and Focus is contributing a significant amount of money on top of that. And number forty-three is for a hundred thousand dollars for the Parking Authority to conduct a feasibility study for parking and potential development within the South End. Due to the, you know, existence of the MGM parking facility, you know, we've looked at potential demand within the South End for parking purposes other than casino business, and, you know, we'd like to pursue that. The Gaming Commission thought it was a worthwhile cause, so we're looking to partner with the city's Economic Development Office to get a, a full comprehensive study done of that area, and hopefully we'll see some opportunities for, for the development within those sites. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the council regarding item number forty-two? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, can you please call the rule on suspending Rule nineteen and take this order up in one vote?
On suspending, so are we suspending Rule nineteen for both orders, or are we voting on them separately?
We're going one by one with each order.
So for item number forty-two, the suspension of Rule nineteen, Counsel Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Hurst?
Yes. Madam Clerk, can you please call the rule on approving the order?
On approving item number forty-two, Counsel Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Hurst?
Yes. Madam Clerk, can you please call the rule on approving the order? Or did we just do that?
Yes, we're suspending Rule nineteen for number forty-three.
Ah, no, ah, no, we're on forty-two. Are there any questions or comments regarding item number forty-three from the council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, can we please follow the rule on suspending Rule nineteen for item number forty-three?
On the suspension of Rule nineteen for item number forty-three, Counsel Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Brown? Yes. Counsel Hurst?
Yes. Madam Clerk, can you please call the rule on approving the order?
On approving item number forty-three, Counsel Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Hurst?
Yes. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is item number forty-four, an order approving a contract over three years for the lease purchase financing of schools of computer.
Is there anyone present to speak to this item?
Yes, Paul Foster, Springfield Public Schools, twenty-nine Dartmouth Street, Springfield, Massachusetts. We've come before you previously in prior years. We provide laptops to every student in grades K to twelve. We replace twenty-five percent of them each year, and we prefer to do the purchase by, via a four-year lease, because that allows us to spread the cost over four years.
Are there any questions or comments from the council? Counselor Fenton?
Paul, have you awarded a contract?
We have had it worked with HP Financial, yes. Is that what you mean? I'm sorry. We have a master, yes, we have a master lease agreement with HP Financial.
So you put out an RFP and you selected a, a successful proposer under the RFP?
Yeah, it's under state contract, actually. In the case of the lease, it's under MHEC contract. So it's not an RFP, but we're using a, a government contract.
I see. So you didn't have to do any solicitation because they're on an approved list, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Are there any other questions or comments from the council? None. Madam Clerk, can you please call the rule on suspending Rule nineteen for item number forty? Sorry. Madam Clerk, can you please call the rule on suspending Rule nineteen for item number forty-four?
On the suspension of Rule nineteen for item number forty-four, Counsel Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Hurst?
Yes. Madam Clerk, can you please call the rule on approving the contract?
On approving item number forty-four, Counsel Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Whitfield? Yes. Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Hurst?
Yes. The order is approved. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is order authorizing a contract term over three years for a C-MED system upgrade agreement.
Is there anyone present to speak to this order?
Mr. President, this is Kathleen Breck, City of Springfield Law Department, thirty-six Court Street, and I believe Commissioner Calvi is also here to speak on this item. Commissioner, this is for the five-year term for the C-MED upgrade.
Ye- yes, I'm here.
Would you, so this is a request for the council to allow us to go out for a five-year contract with Motorola to upgrade the C-MED system, which is the Coordinated Medical Emergency Direction System used by ambulance, EMTs, and paramedics to communicate with the emergency rooms to which they're bringing patients and getting instruction from the doctors at the emergency rooms. The, the equipment, both the hardware, the software, and the service and support will all be upgraded. And it's a five-year contract, and for, for stability, pricing, for budget reasons, the ability to get upgrades to the software as well as the hardware, and to keep the, the system running efficiently for the next several years, well, actually, well beyond the five-year period. We're asking the council to approve the five-year term. The funding for this contract is paid for by the C-MED fund, which is a user fee each time the, the system is used. And that the total amount of the contract is, for the total five years, is two hundred and seventeen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirty-five cents. It's a sole-source contract because the existing equipment is Motorola, so we're, we're using, we need to have Motorola equipment to replace it and upgrade it.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments regarding this contract from the council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, can you please call the rule on suspending Rule nineteen to take this order up in one vote?
On the suspension of Rule nineteen for item number forty-five, Counsel Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Hurst?
Yes. Madam Clerk, can you please call the rule on the order?
On approving item number forty-five, Counsel Gomez?
Yeah.
Yes. Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Hurst?
Yes. The order is approved. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is number forty-six, an order approving a contract over three years for lease purchase financing of, of Pierce and Porter fifteen hundred.
Is there anyone present to speak to this item?
Mr. President, I can speak to that item unless the commissioner would like to.
I'm not sure that, I'm not sure this was actually gonna be on tonight, but what this is, is a, a contract to allow us to go for five years on our next purchase of our fire, next fire engine in the replacement program.
Thank you, Commissioner. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, can you please call the rule on suspending Rule nineteen?
On the suspension of Rule nineteen for item number forty-six, Counsel Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Hurst?
Madam Clerk, can you please call, approving the order itself?
On approving item number forty-six, Counsel Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Hurst?
Yes. The order is approved. Counselor Gomez, sorry.
Yes. First and foremost, I'll just want to say to somebody that was waiting in the, in the crowd for these agenda items to be, they're waiting on them. Can you hear me clearly? I just want to make sure, because I know we have a connected phone. I really, I would like to motion the rest of the orders to my subcommittee, because last couple of years with CPC, we have heard them in the Economic Development Subcommittee where Bob McCarroll would come in, we'll talk about them, and ask the questions one by one. And for the interest of time, and deliberating and questioning, I think it's more appropriate that, I know that may, a lot of these projects that are before us, this is the first time we see them, and I think that I can schedule a, a meeting next week so then we can get ahead of the, ahead of it and really have all the questions that the, my colleagues might have. So then when we hear it in our next regularly scheduled meeting, we can accept them very swiftly. And I, I wanted to jump ahead early on and, and send them to committee, but we were just rolling, and I didn't know how to stop it, and just, if it was appropriate enough to jump ahead to, to throw those into committee. I know that we have people on the call that are waiting for these agenda items, but my, and, and humbly in my opinion, I think these agenda items need to be sent to committee, so that's my motion.
Second.
There's a motion made by Counselor Gomez to send these items to committee, seconded by Counselor Davila. On the motion, Counsel Letterman and Counselor, followed by Counsel Whitfield.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have an objection to sending the items to committee. I agree that in the past, we've held a committee meeting to review them, and it's a substantial amount of taxpayer dollars. But I do think that if Chairman McCarroll from the CPC is present, I mean, he's been on the committee meeting for three hours, so I think it would be appropriate for him to be able to, to take one item first, just to allow him to speak to the CPC process and how they arrived at these particular items, and then to refer the rest of the orders to committee. So if we could do that, I would be supportive.
Fair enough. We certainly will allow that to happen. Either way, Counselor Whitfield, followed by Counsel Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Counsel Gomez, for saying that, because I was confused. I was like, did we have a CPC meeting without, because, without me, because I didn't recall getting a meeting invite, so I'm glad that you suggested sending these items to committee, and I do support that, because I do have some in-depth questions about the situation.
Thank you, Counsel Whitfield. Counsel Walsh?
Well, I feel the same way, and I'm glad that Counselor Gomez is referring these to committee, because these are great projects, and there's a lot of citizen participation, and I, I think we should give them their due, and I don't think that, you know, it's already almost nine o'clock tonight, that we would give the attention to the projects that they need, because this is a wonderful thing for the City of Springfield, and it's all across the city, so I'm happy that we're gonna give them the time that they deserve.
Thank you, Counsel Walsh. So there's been a motion made by Counselor Gomez, seconded by Counselor Davila. Before we take a vote on sending these to committee, Mr. McCarroll, if you could just briefly talk about the process, and, and then we can talk about the next steps. Why don't you do that?
Absolutely, counselors. Happy to talk about the process. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. So this is the third year that we've been pleased to bring you our recommendations. We began this new application cycle by having a series of, of workshops for people that were interested in applying in January and February. Applications were due in April, at the beginning, but we extended it to the end of April due to the COVID shutdown. Twenty-five applications came in, which is about the same number as last year. And we are recommending fifteen of them for your consideration. The committee met with all twenty-five applicants. They were given an opportunity to make a brief overview of their project, followed by questions. And then the committee met three or four times in terms of discussing the projects and taking votes on the projects that we would be recommending to you. The timeframe is now yours, so you get to take however long you want to decide whether you want to approve these as recommended, approve them with less funding than we recommended, or not to approve them at all. So I'm happy to, whenever Counselor Gomez sets up a subcommittee meeting, to be there.
Thank you, Mr. McCarroll. I'm sure Counselor Gomez will certainly extend the invitation to yourself. And Counselor Gomez, I look forward to being in attendance, as I know my colleagues do also at that meeting, when you do indeed set it up. So there's a motion on the floor made by Counselor Gomez, seconded by Counselor Davila. Madam Clerk, can you please call the rule on motion- Madam Clerk, can you please call the role on motioning these items to the Economic Development Committee?
On motion to send items 47 through 61 to the Economic Development Subcommittee, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst?
Yes, these items will be sent to committee. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is item number 62. It's the National Needle Building Historic District. It's on for second and third step.
Thank you. Is there anyone present to speak to this item? Is there anyone present to speak to this item?
Vincent Walsh, Chairman of the Springfield Historic Commission, just for questions if there are any.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Are there any additional questions regarding this district? Yes, Counselor Gomez.
Mr. President, I apologize to report on this actual item. We did have a subcommittee on this to bring it up, bring us up to speed where we had the, one, the Historical Commission that was there. We had Alvin Allen from Economic Development. And also, we had the gentleman that owned the property, that they had some meetings with the actual owner. And he did it under, he, he was kind of renewed to the, to the thought of creating a historic district. Because it would open up a kind of avenues for him to be able to seek rehabilitation. He stated that he was probably gonna go into maybe selling this property to some other developers, that the developers did not object to creating this a historic district. We talked extensively, we didn't have, he, he didn't object to it for the most part. We had a really good conversation. I am one of the sponsors, I am the sponsor to making this a historic district, which is just part of the building, the whole entire building. But I was hoping that somebody from Economic Development would be here. But for the most part, we did have a great meeting and since then, I haven't received no information of not moving forward. And we know with the demolition delay, we're at its cusp and I would like to see this move forward. So with that being said, if any of my colleagues have any more questions, some of my colleagues were there, I can't really pick and choose which, which one of us were all there, who was not there. But if I'm missing something, I'll let my, my colleagues, you know, state, you know, if there's any questions or anything moving forward when it comes to this historic district of the needle, the needle building in Ward 1.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield, followed by Counselor Walsh.
I'm going to defer to Counselor Walsh because she had her hand up before me and then I'll, I'll circle back.
Must go in alphabetical order. I thought that was the case. Or maybe it doesn't. Anyhow, Counselor Walsh, sorry. You have to unmute yourself, Counselor Walsh. You, you have to unmute yourself, Counselor Walsh. Counselor Walsh?
I didn't hear what I said, obviously. Okay, I said I'm, I'm happy not to have to follow Counselor Whitfield. I had to follow her Saturday at the Black Lives Matter. I felt very inadequate. She did such a wonderful job with the, with that. But I'm happy to support this tonight. I was concerned when we brought it up that there were no conversations with the, with the owner of the building. So Counselor Gomez has explained that he was in the discussion. So I'm very happy to support this tonight and hopefully it will be unanimous.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh, Counselor Whitfield.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh, for your acknowledgement. I appreciate it. I, I didn't get that feeling on the call. I was on the same call and I felt like the owner didn't realize that this portion of the building was being changed to a historical designation and really didn't understand what that meant for him. I didn't get that he was in full support of changing it. I felt like he was unaware. So I think Alvin was on the call and I'm not sure who else, but I could be wrong, but that, I, I got a different sense on that call.
All right, good evening, Counselors. This is Alvin Allen, Senior Planner in the Office of Planning and Economic Development, 29 Lively Lane, Springfield, Mass. Just to reiterate what was stated during the meeting, the, the property owner did realize that his property, you know, that this proposal was, was, was before. He was not made aware of the City Council meeting, or he was made aware, but for whatever reason, he didn't receive the notification. However, he did state that he was aware, and again, he is on the call as well, just want to make that clear. But he, he did understand that the, there was a push to make his property a historic district. He was, wasn't necessarily in favor of it. However, he, he did state that he had investors lined up who did understand that there was a potential for the property to become a historic district and that they were not concerned with that fact.
Okay, well, I must have missed that part with the investors because I thought that he was unaware and that it would make it more difficult to sell the property if that portion was turned into a historical portion of the building. But if he's on the call and he can just confirm what you said, Alvin, I'm fine with it. I could have missed it. And, you know, we get distracted and we forget. So I'm fine with him. If he's fine with it, I'm fine with it.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. Did you want to ask the owner?
Yes, I would like the owner to say it with, for himself, that he's fine with turning that portion of the building to a historical building and it doesn't cause him any undue stress.
If the owner is present on this call, can you please state your name and address for the record and then speak to the issue?
Yeah, my name is Rajkada. I'm the owner of the Six Liberty Street LLC. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah.
And I have no objection for my building to be put into a historical district.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. Counselor Davila, followed by Counselor Gomez.
Oh yes, Mr. President, I do have just more of a, of a, one of procedural questions. I myself, recused myself in the first hearing of this. I do believe that we're doing the second and third of this one, correct, today?
Yes.
So would I still be able to vote if I choose to today?
Um, I'll defer, Madam Clerk.
You said you were recused from the last vote, Counselor?
I recused myself in the first round, correct?
So you would need to be recused for a second and third step as well?
Very well. Then I recuse myself.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez, followed by Counselor Fenton.
I'll, I'll yield to Counselor Fenton and go after.
Counselor Fenton.
Thank you. To the owner, several years ago, we granted a special permit to this property for redevelopment.
Zone change.
Was it a zone change we did?
Sorry, sorry for interrupting. It was a zone change.
Oh, it wasn't a special permit. Because I remember at the time, then Attorney Ryan, later Counselor Ryan, now again Attorney Ryan, was representing the petitioner. And I, I swear that we appointed, that we approved a special permit for either a hotel or condominium use at this site. And was that, were you the owner of the property at that time, sir? And is there still a plan? Is there still a plan to do that?
No, not anymore.
Okay. And, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Fenton, Counselor Gomez. Did you want to say something before I go to Counselor Letterman?
Yes, I just wanted to state that, you know, during our meeting, we did hit into the fact that, which I told him, that the concern was that early on, when it first came across our, you know, to the council, he did have some, some investors and the investors, that situation had fell through for what Counselor Fenton was, was talking about just now. And I think that moving forward, I think he didn't, when we would talk in this, when we spoke at the Subcommittee, he didn't understand that becoming a historic district, what the uncertainty was, that it would create a vehicle for him to actually go after some tax credits to be able to rehabilitate that building or for whoever he would, to purchase. So that was the kind of like gray area that he didn't know, becoming a historic, you know, site would create. Obviously, there is, you know, if you wanted to change anything with the building, when it came to the windows and the outside structure, not necessarily on the inside, it would go to the Historic, Historic Commission. But rather, you know, we would love to see something obviously happen there and just the historical significance and that type of building. You know, moving forward, I know that that portion of the building is the only portion that is looked at to become an historic site. But other than that, that's all I wanted to add, just a little bit more context to how the meeting had went. I think, Hosh, if I, if I'm right, I, I can't pronounce your last name, I apologize, sir. I think now that he knows what is, you know, available to him, maybe it can help him, you know, move forward or get some other investors to probably do something there in the near future. That, that was about, that was about it. And that was my understanding on that, Father. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez. Counselor Letterman?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to briefly, you know, speak in support of the Historic Commission or the Historic District creation. And I'm really glad to see that the owner is now on board as well and that we've been able to, you know, reach out to him with the resources that this can bring. So it's wonderful to see that we'll have a chance to preserve a piece of history downtown and also to preserve the value of the property, which I think is very important moving forward as well. I just had a quick point of order and addition. I don't, I don't mean, certainly don't mean to challenge the clerk, but I just want to understand for myself if Counselor Davila, I don't know if he recused himself from the last vote or if he abstained from the last vote. But it was my understanding is we're just voting on this as an ordinance. There's not a hearing involved in it. And so I'm just wondering why if he's chosen not to abstain this time, he wouldn't be allowed to vote. As if, you know, you had missed a meeting and came up on, on a next ordinance, you'd still be able to vote. You'd be allowed to change your vote from first to second step. So I'm just wondering if he's decided he doesn't wish to abstain, why he wouldn't be allowed to vote?
It depends on his purpose for abstaining. So if there's an interest in the property or some connection to the owner, or I mean, there's a few different examples of why he would choose abstaining based on his interest in the item itself. That's up to Counselor Davila. I'm not certain. He didn't express that and he doesn't have to if he doesn't want to. I would say just to be safe, if he's abstaining from one vote, to abstain from the others as well.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. If there are no further questions regarding this ordinance or comments, then Madam Clerk, can you please call the role on accepting, on passing the ordinance?
Passing second and third step for item number 62, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila abstained? Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst?
Yes, Madam Clerk, can we please call the role on invoking Rule 22C to take the second and third step together?
On invoking Rule 22C for item number 62, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Davila abstained? Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst?
Yes, the ordinance is approved. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is a Quadrangle Mattoon Street Historic District Amendment and it's on for first step as an ordinance.
Thank you. Is there anyone present to speak to this item? Say again, is there anyone, Counselor Gomez, sorry?
Yes, this is another thing that we had talked about in my subcommittee today. I think Mr. Allen is still with us. If not, I just wanted to verify, he was the individual that I was working with within the Economic Development Department for us to put forth this and we could talk about it. It's a little bit, it has to do with just a little bit, just a little bit of context from my end. It's where, where, this is to exempt the Science Museum out of the, out of the Mattoon Street so they can go after a little bit more resources. But I'll let Mr. Allen talk a little bit more about that. Mr. Allen, you may take.
Yes, thank you, Counselor Gomez. We also have Ms. Alicia Bono from the Springfield Museums on the call. She can speak to, or petition for the matter. But just giving a little bit of background, so this property, the Springfield Science Museum, which is one of the Springfield Museum properties, is within, currently within the boundaries of the Quadrangle Mattoon Local Historic District, which was created back in 1972. However, back when it was created, there was a lawsuit that removed the Springfield Science, I'm sorry, the Springfield Museums, each of their properties, as well as the Springfield Library, as well as the Springfield Diocese properties, were all exempt from the Quadrangle Mattoon Local Historic District guidelines. So as other properties within the district have to withhold the standard of coming before the commission to get approval for any exterior feature, any change to their exterior feature, the Springfield Museums, as well as the library and the Springfield Diocese do not, are not held to that same standard, even though they are within the district boundaries.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this item? Seeing none, are there any questions or comments from the council? Mr. Dromi, I see you have your hand raised.
Well, I just wanted to point out that, that what we're asking to is this will put the, the exemption for the Science Museum will be removed. And that is part of money they've received through the CPC for a project that they're completing. So as part of getting that money from the, from the CPC, they were required to remove that exemption from, from the, from the underlying guideline. So the Science Museum will be back under the controls of the Quadrangle Mattoon.
Thank you, Mr. Dromi. Are there any other individuals wishing to speak to this ordinance? Seeing none, are there any questions or comments from the council regarding this ordinance? Madam Clerk, can you please call the role on taking first step on this ordinance?
On taking first step for item number 63, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield? Yes, Counselor Davila? Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst?
Yes, the ordinance is approved. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is just a referral to the planning board for a zone change.
We are not taking any action on this item, correct, Madam Clerk?
Correct.
Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is number 65. It's a resolution for support of the Holyoke Soldiers' Home.
Motion delayed on the table.
So there's a motion to table this item. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
That item is seconded. There's a motion on the floor. That item has been seconded. Madam Clerk, can you please call the role? Is there any discussion on the motion? Sorry. Madam Clerk, can you please call the role on tabling this item?
On tabling item number sixty-five, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Hurst?
Yes. This item has been tabled. Is, Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is number sixty-six. It's an ordinance for Police Commissioner and Community Police Hearing Board, and it was referred to committee on June 22nd.
Is there any action to be taken on this item? Seeing none. This will remain in committee. Madam Clerk, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item on the agenda is sixty-seven. It's a special act related to outstanding fines, fees, penalties related to fireworks, and it was continued from July 20th.
Okay. Is there anyone present to speak to this item?
Mr. President, Attorney Moore from the Law Department, present to answer any questions.
Counselor Davila?
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to send this to committee, preferably the General Government Committee.
There's a motion on the floor by Counselor Davila to send this item to committee.
Point of information?
Yes.
Doesn't this item still exist in committee? And obviously, after a certain portion of time, it would die if it goes back to committee.
This item was continued, and so it probably shouldn't have been an unfinished business. So certainly, I will take responsibility for that. And so I think we ought to, we ought to hear this item tonight. So with that being said, there's a motion made by Counselor Davila. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Walsh. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the role on sending this item to committee?
On sending item number sixty-seven to committee, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Whitfield? Yes. Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton?
No.
No. Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ramos? Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Williams?
No.
No. Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown? Yes. Counselor Hurst?
This item will be sent to the General Government Committee. Madam Clerk, is there any further business before the council?
Just for clarification, if the council could just give me two more minutes, so we can revote on approving item number forty-one, just to be safe, please?
Absolutely.
So on the approval of item number forty-one, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Whitfield?
I don't even know what item number forty-one was.
Item number forty, I'll read it. Item number forty, it was in order for the transfer from City Land to DBW.
I'm so tired, because you are a benchy.
I still don't know, because Adam. Okay. It was repurposed on land for DBW?
Yes.
Okay. Yes.
Yes.
I got blade preserved.
Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Fenton?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Curran?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Letterman?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Brown? Yes. Counselor Hurst?
Counselor Fenton?
Just not on this item, Mr. President, but before we adjourn, I was wondering if you could just tell any of us if there's any ongoing thoughts to whether we would meet in person before the end of the year, or I just, I mean, I think it's been, it's worked out pretty nicely, but meetings aren't the same without meeting in person. And I don't know what standards we'd use to decide that in the future. Certainly don't want to open a long discussion about it tonight, but maybe you could just tell us a little bit about what you'll consider in that regard before the end of the year.
So my thought process is that we go remote until the end of the year. But I'll certainly reach out to individual councilors and get their perspective. I'll do that offline, and I'll come back to the table and let you know the decision that folks have made.
Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk, is there any further business before the council?
There's no further business before the council.
Our executive session, which is Wednesday at 5:30.